Welcome and good evening to the school committee meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. A happy belated Valentine's Day to everyone. We will be recording this meeting and it will be broadcast on WHCA. As we start with all meetings, if you could please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Alright, so the first order of business, we do have a fairly lengthy agenda and I have a feeling this will be a longer meeting, but we'll see. So, the first order of business on the agenda though is an executive session, so we are planning on going into executive session for roughly fifteen minutes, but that's planned, it could go ten, it could go thirty, that'll be up to the will of the committee. So, I would be looking for a vote to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session based upon the requirements that you're going to be reading.
Yeah, and I'll read it. The executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. Specifically, we will be discussing WHEA collective bargaining for Unit B. Once we do reconvene, we will have the rest of the agenda. So I'll be looking for a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
All vote yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Alright, we are in executive session, if you could all just let us do our thing. There we go. Okay, we are back in session. Alright, the next item is public comment. However, if the committee would indulge and support this, I would suspect that a good amount of the public comment is probably in relation to either transportation, transportation start times in or budget. So if anyone would like to comment on those items, if the committee is okay with it, I'd like for us to actually hear the presentation and have some of the conversation and then have the public comment, so they don't have to do public comment without kind of hearing the discussion. Certainly folks are open to public comment now, but as long as that's okay with everyone. If anyone has public comment outside of budget and transportation, or really feels the urge to share anything publicly right now, feel free to come on up. Okay.
Chris, are we doing ratification?
No, Lucy Green's not here yet.
Yeah, you're fine, please. If you could just give us your name and where you're from. Your address. Because I'm not going to student, right?
Where are you going to college?
They're just here on their own.
Yeah, where are you going to college? We're dying to know that.
You already know all of it. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Noah Roberts, as you may know. I live on East Washington Street in Hanson. And for the student advisory committee, we're here representing the information that we've collected over the past couple of weeks. We've had the privilege to visit Conley, Indian Head, and Hanson Middle School, collecting data from students, asking them questions, having office conversations for short periods. And we feel that it's been very valuable in our outlook for the kind of topics moving forwards. And hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll be visiting Duval and Duval Middle to kind of get the full picture and the full student things. But for now, we just like to share some of the information that we've collected. I know that your mission start times a little bit later, but that was kind of part of my answer, sorry about that.
Yeah, and so just to clarify, so I'm sorry, so I thought, I didn't realize we were doing a student advisory report today. So we'll just fit it into public comment, but that's why I said what I did, I was thinking you were just here for public comment. So that is wonderful that you were doing the student advisory report, so carry on, you can do your thing, keep going.
So regarding the start times, when we visited Conley and Indian Head Elementary Schools, the overwhelming support from the students, they're very enthusiastic about all the questions we had. But especially for start times, the majority of them did support starting earlier. As when we asked them what time they would wake up, almost all of them said before seven AM, just will, which I know I'm saying. But they really did support starting earlier. And speaking to the students, it seems like their afternoon schedules were increasingly overwhelming and that they were doing more things at even just elementary level. And that starting later for them prevented them from doing some activities or would cause them to not have as much time in the afternoon to do a lot of regular elementary things, like being able to be friends that way, other activities. So they felt that having an earlier start time would allow them to do more social activities and would just fit into their schedule more significantly earlier regardless. And at the Hanson Middle School, it was kind of the opposite effect as they start later than high school now. And they feel pretty comfortable with the start time, but it was kind of leaning either way. Some of them were willing to go a little bit later, but not too late, some of them were willing to go a little bit earlier, but not incredibly early as they would have difficulty waking up as well. But after talking to them, for the most part, they would be willing to start a little bit earlier as their schedules are also busy in the afternoon. And because of the middle school activities, mostly the sports rely on, that's like clubs and things like that, so they don't offer sports directly at middle school. Their practices sort of later, some of them being half an hour, an hour away. Meaning that if sports take up so much of your afternoon, then having more time in the afternoon to act before you do school and do some activities could be greatly beneficial and probably if you try to start another way earlier, give them a little bit more camera cushion about the afternoon. And that was my report of the start times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hi Noah. So one of the other things that we collected when we were talking to the other schools, a lot of them wanted more extracurricular activities. They all showed, like a lot of us in being able to do things after school. When we talked to the Indian Head Student Council, they come in, I think it's like a half hour earlier or something to meet and talk before school. They said they'd love to do other activities that were like that, they'd be willing to come before school, they'd be willing to say after school to do things they enjoy. A lot of those things were, they became the long run thing because of COVID. And we really would like to bring that back because a lot of the kids seem maybe interested in it. There's many different things they've talked about, like, because all of them have different interests and they want all sorts of things. And it was just really surprising to see how many kids would want to stay after school, would want to come to school for a way to be able to do things differently. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And I miss that.
So, oh, I'm Riley, I live on South Avenue. So we did talk to the kids about how they feel about their extracurricular activities. And like I said, the overwhelming consensus was that they just want to learn more, they want to learn more about more subjects, they want to have more related arts classes. And we know that adding some sort of robotics or extra STEM programs on the budget this year, so we did ask them about that. And they overwhelmingly seemed interested in having a robotics program and just being able to explore that. We also talked to them not only about their extracurriculars, but how they felt in school, socially and emotionally. And for the most part in all three schools, the students felt that they did have a good support system, which we were really glad to hear. And a lot of the, some of the kids mentioned having safe spaces like a quiet corner in their classroom, that they were unevenly distributed along with students. And we think that as a district, working to have more mobilized places for kids who are maybe having a bad day or they need more of that physical, like, they just need quiet time, just to have more inner acceptance of that. And we did ask the elementary, the middle school kids and the elementary school kids if they felt like their transition to middle school or high school would be eased by having some kind of buddy or mentor. And they all said yes, they all love the idea. So we would love to implement that kind of way, that kind of system. And overall, our visits to the schools were incredible, we were really happy to meet with students and they gave us great information about middle school. Thanks.
Hang on, thank you. Don't go to it.
I just had a question for you guys. So you said you went to, I think you said Hanson Middle and Conley, is that right?
Yep, and Indian Head.
In Indian Head. What kind of access did you have to the students and was it student council like kids or was it, what was that like?
For all three schools, we met with the student council, which we were talking about this earlier, it's kind of a biased sample of the kids. So we would love to talk to kids other than student council, but we do acknowledge that might be a little difficult to get.
Hmm, hmm. Thank you.
Anyone else? John?
Do you have scheduled time to visit Duval and Duval?
We've tried to reach out to those, we just really haven't heard back.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything from Duval, but the Duval Middle Principal said he'll update us about the next students we're in class.
We're hoping we can get in there soon.
Thank you. Oh, one more.
I'll just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I guess my follow-up would be, is there anything we can facilitate to help them get in touch with all the schools?
Yeah, sorry.
I was just gonna say, my son's a fourth grader at student council at Indian Head. And when he met with you guys, he, that was the first thing he said in the car, we had high school kids come today. Oh, I know. So it was not a notice that you were there, which is great.
Great. Steve?
So what is your feeling with the general consensus, not only from these meetings, but even your colleagues here in high school on start times? And I mean, basically unofficially, but you know, giving us some guidance because we've heard from a lot of parents and others.
Yeah, the general consensus regarding start times is that the high schoolers overwhelmingly want to start earlier with a couple of exceptions.
And later.
Oh, sorry, the high schoolers want to start later and being able to, I don't know the exact time, but the overwhelming is that they want to start later. The elementary school students overwhelmingly want to start earlier today. And then the middle school students, it was kind of split between wanting to start earlier or wanting to start later. So that was the consensus that we received from students so far.
Thank you. I'm sure they all want to start later and get out earlier.
Our half days every day.
Yeah, half days.
What size is the sampling? Approximately how many per school?
It varied a little bit in the middle school, it was probably twenty-five students ranging from fifth grade, eighth grade. And the elementary schools, Hanson Middle School probably had about another twenty-five?
Hanson's from that school.
Yeah, twenty-five, thirty in Hanson Middle School ranging from eighth, I believe it was just fourth, very poor period.
Very.
Hanson.
And Indian Head?
It's just fourth grade. Fifteen fourth graders.
Just fourth grade and then for Duval Middle School, it was.
Sorry.
For Conley, it was third, fourth, and fifth graders, I would say there was about twenty-five to twenty-six kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for doing what you do, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay. Where are we?
With that, I think we can go to transportation.
So just to frame this up a little bit.
Can I just start?
Oh, yeah.
So I just have a couple of announcements, you know, I'll take the superintendent's purview a little bit.
Yeah, of course.
So today is National School Resource Officer Day. And I need to shout out to our Harringtons, who are not related, Derek and Kevin. We posted a little bit on social media, they do a great job. I want to include Lucy into that. And the future Lucy, who's going to be coming to Whitman soon, Kevin's getting a dog from the same breeder as Lucy. So that's, I don't know the name yet, but I know it's a female. I also wanted to thank Chief Handlin, Deputy Chief Bombardier, Chief Mix, and Deputy Chief Casey from Witten PD and Hanson PD. I sent something out to the district, there's been some swatting going around with schools. Really frustrating and anxiety ridden, puts us in a real difficult spot. But knowing I can get to the chiefs with a text and I get a response back, whatever you need Jeff, we got your back, whatever you need. Both SROs are at the high school through this week. Things were good today, I also appreciate just having them around. So I really like that relationship that we have with our, with our emergency services in both communities. I also wanted to say today's my five year anniversary. Five years ago today, I was hired, I was on the hot seat out there. Feels like the hot seat here now, but, but I really appreciate working for the district. And it's five years today, so the day after Valentine's Day. So now I get to go into and if you could frame, frame what we have.
Happy anniversary. Yeah, so we do have transportation updates on the agenda, so just to frame this up a little bit, because I know all of us got a number of emails on start times specifically and high school and other start times. But the presentation tonight was really something that came out of the school committee's summer discussions and the superintendent's goals. There were some whole bunch of other conversations that also occurred around transportation. So this is, I think, and again, we haven't seen this yet, I think it was put into the drive a little while ago. Believe it or not, most of us actually, I think we all have other obligations and jobs besides school committee as well. So I haven't looked at this, I'm sure others haven't either. So really tonight is all about trying to share a little bit of a, hopefully, plan or potential plan for how the district looks at transportation, which would include start times as well as how we transport both mandated and non-mandated students, and we'll talk about what that means. But that's really the intent of the presentation. There was a whole bunch of emails about votes for high school start times. That wasn't on the agenda, certainly people can motion for whatever they want, but that, that was not, that was not this. So I just want to level set with folks that are here to make sure they understand kind of how we got here and what we're doing, so.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Just when you say start times wasn't here, it absolutely is in here and it says start times on this paperwork.
On the agenda, can you point out?
Not on the agenda, but right here in this presentation says start time. So I think we need to recognize that it's part of the whole.
When did you get the presentation?
When did I get it?
Tonight.
It's this right here, that has the word start time. So your, your comment was just that this is not about start times.
So this presentation that I have not looked at, but I think we just got in our drives an hour ago, says start times. The agenda that was published for this meeting has no mention of the word start time, it's a transportation update, which start times is a part of.
Okay.
But there were several emails that said there was a vote for start times tonight. So I'm just level setting with the folks that are here tonight, that that may happen, but that was, it's a transportation update that the superintendent is presenting. So there was nothing on the agenda that said, hey, we're voting on start times today for the high school. At least that I'm aware of, and I'm the one that put together the agenda, so.
No, we're not talking about vote, but our February first presentation showed three scenarios as a potential option in the future at some point. So I think that was the reaction to, you know, constituents, they're looking at the committee's gonna have three scenarios.
Yeah, we're gonna, so John, we're gonna talk about start times. Again, I'm just trying to level set, unless people know something that I don't, right? So as the chairperson, the superintendent, we put together the agenda and that was the way the agenda was laid out. So again, people can, people can make a motion and people can vote however they want, but the purpose of tonight's meeting was to get an updated transportation presentation, which includes start times. That was, unless someone on the committee feels, alright. Unless I'm missing something, that's kind of what we talked about.
Almost any.
Yeah, if other people communicated other things, that's on that. Alright, so if we could move on to the presentation.
So folks, I'm gonna read through this too, for the record, for people watching at home who can't see the screen. Want to thank Karen Villanueva, the Director of Transportation, John Stamper for the numbers guy for putting this together. The original numbers that I presented around, I want to say, one of those scenarios around start times, the numbers were incorrect. We have adjusted those in the budget packet, which we'll talk about later and in this presentation. This is by no means the be all, end all. These are scenarios that we've, we've come up with as far as what we have. And I'll just run through the presentation and we'll go from there, so. What's being presented today is Language from the Regional Agreements nineteen ninety-one and two thousand eight, eighteen. We are under the ninety-one agreement, however, I think it's important that I clarify what was in the two thousand eighteen agreement that was voted, then taken back, and then not, and passed over in Whitman. School Committee Policies Regarding Transportation. Mass General Laws Regarding Chapter Seventy-One, Section Seven-A. Current Transportation Procedures. Inconsistencies That We Found In These Procedures. Options, My Recommendations, and Finally, How Start Times Affect Transportation. The Ninety-One Agreement. School Transportation Shall Be Provided By the Regional School District and the Costs thereof Shall Be Apportioned to the Member Towns as an Operating Cost. The Regional School Committee Shall Determine on an Annual Basis Whether or Not Non-Mandated Bussing Will be Paid by the Regional School District. If the Regional School Committee Decides Not to Provide Non-Mandated Bussing, An Article Will be Presented to the Selectmen's Office of Each Town for Approval by the Voters. The Two Thousand Eighteen Proposed Agreement. The District Will Provide Pupil Transportation for Students Who Live More Than One and a Half Miles From School From Which They Attend as Pursuant to the Laws and Regulations of the Commonwealth. The Amount of Chapter Seventy-One Transportation Reimbursement Will be subtracted from the Costs of Pupil Transportation. And this Amount Will be Assessed to the Towns Based on Pupil Enrollment in All Member Towns in the District on October first of the Preceding Fiscal Year For Which the Apportionment Will be Assessed. The Cost of Pupil Transportation for Students Who Live Less Than One Half Miles From School From Which They Attend Will be Paid by the Town in Which the Pupil Lives. The Percentage of the Total of Pupils Being Transported Less Than One Half Miles From Each Member Town Will be Multiplied by the Total Cost and Bill to Each Member Town. Chapter Seventy-One, Section Seven-A, Transportation of Pupils, Payment Costs and Limitations. These two pertain to the Regional School District right now. Letter A, No Reimbursement for Transportation of a Pupil Between School and Home Shall be Made on Account of Any Pupil Who Resides Less Than One Half Miles From the School Which He Attends Measured by a Commonly Traveled Route. That means we don't get reimbursement. No Reimbursement for Transporting a Pupil Between Schools and Home Shall be Made to a School System Which Does not Certify to the Department of Ed in a Manner Prescribed by the Department That the Average Number of Students Transported Over a Period of an Academic Year Does not Equal or Exceed Seventy-Five Percent of the Carrying Capacity of the Bus or Other Transportation System Used by the School System Provided. However, this section shall not apply to any school district which is or has been subjected to the provisions of a court ordered busing program. This was something that we had to adjust to last year. Regional School District Policies and Transportation, we have four policies that adhere to this. If we make any changes tonight or moving, not tonight, but moving forward in this fiscal year, for the next fiscal year, we would have to change policy E E A A, as it doesn't really spell out non-mandated busing at all. Current Transportation Practices. All Kindergarten Students Are Entitled to Transportation. Transportation Will Not be Generally Provided for Grade One Through Five Students Who Live Less Than Three Quarters of a Mile From Their Elementary School of Attendance. Transportation Will Not Generally Be Provided for Grade Six Through Twelve Students Who Live Less Than One and One Half Miles From Their School of Attendance. The Distance From Home To School Shall Be Determined By Measurement Of the Most Direct Combination Of Roads, Streets, Highways, and Public Paths. Measurement Shall Be Determined From the Front Of The School Till The Front Of The Student Residence. Practice Continued. Students Will Be Expected To Walk To Bus Stops. Students In Grades K to Eight Cannot Cross Route Fourteen, Eighteen, Twenty-Seven, and/or Route Fifty-Eight Except Where A Crossing Guard Is Posted. Otherwise, They Will Be Picked Up On The Right-Hand Side Of The Road. For Students In Grade K to Five, The Bus Stop Will Be Located No More Than One Quarter Mile From The Student's Home. For Students In Grades Six To Twelve, The Bus Stop Will Be Located No More Than One Half Mile From The Student's Home. Transportation Practice Continued. District Transportation. All Students That Live One And A Half Miles Or Further From Their School Will Receive Transportation As Directed by Mass General Laws. All Kindergarten Students Will Receive Transportation Regardless Of Distance. Hanson Transportation. All Students Regardless Of Distance From Home Are Scheduled For A Bus. Lack Of Sidewalks And Crossing Guards Were Listed As An Example. Whitman Transportation. Elementary Students Who Live Point Seven Five Miles To One Point Five Miles Receive Transportation. Students Who Live Less Than Point Seven Miles Are Considered Walkers. Middle School Students Who Live One Point Five Miles Or Less From Schools Are Considered Walkers. However, There Are Boundaries Drawn That Are Drawn. Whitman Uses Crossing Guards, and I'll show you this map in a minute. Whitman Uses Crossing Guards At A Cost Of Forty-One Thousand Four Hundred And Sixteen Dollars As Approved At Town Meeting in Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Inconsistencies In Our Current Practice. All Students In Hanson Receive A Ride To School, Whitman Students Do Not. In your red folder folks, there are some documents that I'd like to pull out. The map, there's a map around Whitman Middle School. Actually, the map that you have here, the, is Whitman. The dark blue boundary is Whitman. The inner blue boundary, which you can see, is the map that was drawn sometime around two thousand by someone unknown to determine who gets, who walks to school. So that inner blue boundary are your walkers. The outer, where all your greens are, those students get a ride to school right now, but would be considered outside of one point five miles. Okay? So we as a transportation department have been bussing all those greens when they would be considered walkers right now. And I, I'll put this on, on the drive for the folks out there, I just couldn't get up, I'm not Google proficient enough.
The green are inside one and a half mile.
The green are, are right now kids that get a ride, but they're inside of one point five miles. So we drew this boundary somewhere to determine, you know, and I see Route Eighteen in there and things like that. So this boundary has to be different, and that's gonna be one of my recommendations.
Can we get reimbursed for the greens?
No, this, but they're bussing.
How many students are in there?
That, that's later on, I'll show you.
Okay, keep going.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just clarify, so there's this blue here, so these kids are currently walkers.
Correct.
And this blue here.
If you go to all the greens, should be considered under one point five miles.
Gotcha, but these kids outside that blue are bussed.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So that's an inconsistency again, what I'm trying to show is that there are multiple inconsistencies that I think we need to, to address. Guidelines State Elementary Students Who Live Point Seven Five Miles To One Point Five Miles Receive Transportation. Again, that's happening in Hanson, it doesn't, you know, it's different in Whitman. Whitman Uses Crossing Guards, Hanson Does Not, right now, as, as nobody walks to school in Hanson.
Do you, do you have a map like this for Hanson? I know we don't bus kids, but do you have something that would show though?
I would have to draw them up, but we don't, because Hanson just buses everybody.
Everyone's bussed.
Everybody is bussed.
There's no non-mandated students in Hanson? That's my question, because this green is non-mandated, correct?
Not all of them.
Not eligible?
Right, so that would be, so I do, but it's, I'll show you the documents.
Not, okay, okay.
Why don't we let you finish?
I'm sorry.
Now we'll do questions.
I'll write my question.
Relevant to the map.
Yeah.
Relevant to the map.
Okay.
If you're looking at the map and you see Whitman Middle School and then you see the blue boundary and then you see Hog Memorial Drive, one of the reasons why Hog Memorial was eligible for bussing is the town of Whitman did not own the pathway across where that gate is. And there was reimbursement because it was more than the mile and a half as the bus would have to drive around.
So my point around the map right now, it's not, it's not, it's not a good map.
Right.
It's a bad map.
Yeah.
You know?
Bad map.
It's a bad map. And in going back, we, you know, Mr. Sweeney who retired in two thousand and ten as the safety security officer here, used to do transportation. We think Mr. Sweeney created this in the early two thousands.
Craig Finley.
Craig Finley could have been doing it too.
And just, and just to clarify, right, when we say it's a bad map, it's a bad map today.
It's a bad map today, absolutely correct.
It doesn't mean it was a bad.
Perhaps it was a good map then.
Correct, yeah.
Keep going.
But that's the piece.
That happens.
So, so options to consider for the committee tonight. And there are two other documents around dollars and cents. Options to Consider. Bussing All Kindergarten Students. We want to continue to do that, we bussed all kindergarten students when we had half day. And we had to adjust, we now have all day, we have full day cat. So students are coming in and leaving, there's no split in the middle where we're running buses in between. Discontinue Bussing For All Students Under One Point Five Miles Regardless Of The Grade Level. Allow Hanson, and I hate to say allow, but Hanson continues to bus all students because of their demographics, the way it is today, just what we have. Whitman continues to bus students point seven five to one point five, but uses a standard map which will determine eligibility for buses. I mean, we can use a standard map no matter what. Change The Walking Distance From Point Seven Miles To Point Five Miles More Of Alignment How Long Students Are Walking To Their Bus Stops. And bus students from point five miles to one point five, from point five to one point five. Or bus all students who live one point files, one point five miles from school. Now I'm gonna ask you to look at the dollars and cents, the two documents that you have. One stapled and one is not. John, if you can just jump up, just in case I flub. So the document you have, a single document right here. This document that's in your folder, the one pager, is the current dollar amount that we have for our current students today. That's as of today, which we've assessed and we're projecting for next year, okay? This is what we do, this is a, this, this map that we have, this is using the guidelines that we have in both communities. It's this one pager. So you see, you can just follow along how we do the calculations, what the numbers are as they go, what the non-mandated bussing is, reference letter Y. And the total mandate, non-mandated expenses, mandated, non-mandated is one point nine, three five, seven, nine, zero. What we're anticipating the split would be, non-mandated costs total in district is two hundred sixty-four thousand and state reimbursement for FY twenty-five, this is by calculation using that eighty-five percent. So this is, this is actual as of now, using the students that we have currently. This next document gives you, and it's a two pager, it's stapled, gives you some ranges of things. On the, it shows your students, it shows your schools. It shows a column point zero or zero to point It shows a column point zero or zero to point four-nine miles from school, how many students that affects in each school. Then I gave you a number of point five to one-point-four-nine miles, how many students that affects. And then we go to the mandated numbers, one-point-five miles from school or more from school. Now, we changed last year in policy or protocol that we do a mileage rate when we assess the towns for mandated and non-mandated. So John has done all these numbers. If you look in those top columns, we're looking at point four-nine miles, or zero to point four-nine miles. The last column is a total of ninety-four students in district. Eighty-five from Whitman, nine from Hanson, and it varies between elementary and middle. If you look at the column point five, or five-zero to one-point-four-nine miles, you look at the numbers, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four students in Whitman and one-hundred-and-fifty-one in Hanson for a total of nine-hundred-and-thirty-five. And then you look at the mandated numbers going, going left to right. Dropping down, and this is the key piece of expenses, and what, what I think in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to ask the committee to make a recommendation to the Based on the numbers we have and based on the new numbers that Karen has given us, these are actual estimates for FY twenty-four numbers with the exception of kindergarten students. She can't predict kindergarten, we can give a rough estimate, but this is what we have that would be rolled over, grades one through twelve for next year. There is a reduction in transportation costs, which you will see in the transportation documents that we'll show later on. So if you look down, the total cost for Whitman next year in point, or zero to point four-nine miles, that would be additional cost for non-mandated busing would be seventy-five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. That's busing those students from zero to point four-nine miles. Down to Hanson, it's a total of nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. There's only nine students that fall within that category. If you go to the next column, the total, the total cost for Whitman, point five to one-point-four-nine miles is two-hundred-and-twenty-one-two-sixty-eight, and for Hanson, it would be forty-five-four-forty-seven. Okay? If you look at this year's, again, going back to that one-page document, that's almost a break-even of where we're at for total non-mandated busing for this year. The Hanson numbers actually are going down for their assessment in non-mandated. Whitman numbers go up about twenty-eight thousand dollars if we bus all kids. If we bus all kids, Whitman numbers go up twenty-eight grand, and Hanson numbers go up, actually reduce. So.
If we bus all kids.
If we bus all kids. If I use zero, zero to one-point-four-nine miles as non-mandated, and Whitman, the total cost for non-mandated busing next year would be two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand and some change. If I look at Hanson, you're looking at forty-six thousand and some change. This year, the numbers as we have right now currently because of population, and that number might go up a little bit because of kindergartners. Again, this is an estimate. Right now, we're billing the two towns a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, and Whitman's actual cost with that reduction this year is two-eleven. So that's different from what was two-twenty-two, I believe, last week. So these are, are different numbers, but I think it's clearer, and it buses all our kids. And I don't have to worry about, or we don't have to worry about rooted roads, we don't have to worry about sex offenders, we don't have to worry about crossing guards, and if we reduce that, Whitman doesn't have to pay for crossing guards if they choose not to, saving the town forty-one thousand dollars. So that, those are the transportation numbers that we have, and if there are questions, I most certainly will take them in a minute. Again, stuff to digest and come up with questions. So again, I go to recommendations. I put two recommendations, one in black and one in red. I'll read the ones in red right now. I say bus all students. Actually, I even put, bus all K to four students and K to five students, five through twelve, six through twelve, who live more than point five miles. I didn't say bus all students. Again, it's a call on your part. I look at most students who live less than point five miles are probably walking to school anyway, and we use the example, if you live on the corner, I can never pronounce the street in Whitman. If you're living on that corner, by the time you wait for your bus, you'd be at school. So that's one recommendation. If we do this, sixteen middle school students in Whitman won't receive transportation. Everybody in Hanson still would, everybody at the high school still would, and all elementaries would. Again, that's a decision from the committee. I would ask Whitman to eliminate crossing guards, saving the town forty-one thousand, four-hundred-plus, and eliminate the transportation for all ineligible kindergarten students. Because again, the question came, if we bus a kindergarten student who lives less than one-point-five miles and their brother is on that bus, or the second grader, or the sixth grader, actually, it's different if we go with this route, K to four, K to five. And then the next one was bus all students who live point five miles from school according to the district software. If that's the case, nine Hanson students won't be provided transportation, and eighty-five students in Whitman won't receive transportation if we just set that hard line of point five and above. So I think there's some, some options here that are financially, I don't want to speak for the towns, but okay. It's not a huge increase. It's much better than what we used to send the towns when we did the per pupil piece. This is all based on mileage, and it works out for our district costs. John and I did these numbers multiple times over the past four or five days. This is a reduction. Again, we're going to speak to that in the budget because transportation, we are busing less students because of enrollment and things, but these numbers work itself through. It might be a little bit more next year, because again, I don't know how many kindergarten students we're going to get in district. Right now, if I, if I look at my numbers at Connly, I have close to eighty students at Connly, and I have fifty-three at Duval. Not all of those hundred-and-thirty students are going to ride the bus. And in Hanson, I have five sections of twenty, so I have a hundred kids there. Not all of those students ride the bus. So this can fluctuate either way by, by a few numbers, and they would roll out later on. But I think it's an opportunity, one, for us to clean up our language, reduce the inconsistencies in both communities, offer transportation for our students K to twelve, and eliminate the inequities that we have within our communities, and then communicate well to the parents that just because you live in a certain line that was drawn a few years ago, and that's where I think folks in Whitman especially who voted for non-mandated, thought they were getting a ride because that was district policy and it, or district protocol, and it was not. This allows us to clean up the situations that we had from the past.
Any questions here?
Questions here right now is fine.
Couple real quick. Number one, of the sixteen middle school students in Whitman, would any of those kids have to cross Route twenty-seven?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'd have to look.
Yeah.
It could be a student who has to cross Connly, you know, who would have crossed the street, you know, on that, right across twenty-seven, like lives on that side of.
But if we bus every student, and we, as far as not known for the kindergarten kids, we have to provide a bus ride anyways, with that ability. You have to bus all kindergarten kids.
We don't. By state law, we don't.
Oh, I thought you said.
Well, we do. We do now. We bus all.
So the law says we don't.
We do not. Correct. Our practice was, and I think the reason the practice came into is because we had half-day K.
Yeah.
And we provided transportation for our kindergarten kids.
Okay.
That's all.
So, I mean, what's the difference in just busing every kid in Whitman? It seems it would be negligible.
It would be, right.
You know, or you could even back it up to a quarter a mile or even.
It's with, again, these are, these are things that I found over the past two months, and things have shifted a little, and I, looking at our protocols and what we've done, there are too many inconsistencies to not try to firm this up for the next fifteen years. And I would love to have this committee move forward, and I would then revise our guidelines. The safety and security things are pretty clear, and what we do on school buses, but allow us to put forth a transportation protocol for the district that puts all kids, and I, we've heard all the time, we want our kids to be safe, and it's, it's within the realm of reasonability, especially in both communities, because basically, the numbers that they paid last year are pretty equitable to this year's numbers if we bus all students.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So to bus all students, you'd be talking approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, yes.
For Whitman.
For Whitman.
Or, I'm sorry, twenty-eight thousand dollar increase.
Yes. From, in non-mandated.
For, for.
Yep. Non-reimbursable.
Right. The non-reimbursable portion. So you're adding twenty-eight thousand to the bill, but then they're allowed, they're obviously going to subtract forty-one thousand.
Yes, correct.
From the crossing guard. So it's in net effect of about thirteen thousand dollars to the betterment of the town.
Correct.
And Fred, so the total is two-twenty-eight, right? The new total would be two-twenty-eight?
The increase was twenty-eight.
But is the actual two-eleven?
Two-eleven is what's being assessed to them this year.
So it's different, so if it's year-over-year, right, if, so is this what you anticipate would be next year or not?
This is the number that John is using right now.
Okay. So if it's two-eleven presently versus two-twenty-eight, it's only seventeen thousand, right? Difference?
Seventeen, so.
And then to your, so it's even a little better than.
I mean, to me, it's a win-win. If the town can save money and we can provide.
Transportation for kids. Again, I, I don't want to, I don't have kindergartners on, but if, if I, I didn't ask, I'm sorry, this came up as we were doing, I didn't ask the kindergartners, how many kindergartners ride the bus, but it's not a, it's not a whole bus. You know, you have a few here, a few there, maybe a little bit more, and maybe, again, because we had to put longer routes on for the seventy-five percent capacity, more kindergarters didn't take the bus. I'm not sure, this isn't going to increase rides, excuse me, it's not going to increase ride times, you know, based on the numbers we have. They're probably going to be relatively similar. In fact, it might reduce. Again, can't quote it because we can't run the system until we have every kid running, putting them in, in July.
Now, this also eliminates one kid having a bus and three doors down not having a bus.
That's absolutely correct. That was the problem we ran into this year. On this little map, you can see that little corner where there's a little piece of white in the far-left corner where it's all green, and there's a little white, white little driveway, and that was the parent that said, "The bus rides right by my house." But again, my transportation director was going by the, the inner map that was drawn up twenty years ago.
Don.
So question on these recommendations, because I'm not following the difference between the two. Because the double asterisk at the top says bus all students who live point five miles from school, and then the red, bus all students who live more than point five miles from school. So can you explain?
Sure.
Why the numbers are different, but it sounds like the explanation is the same, point five miles.
So one, the bottom, the red, is just elementary, busing all students, no matter if they're point five miles or less, and the five through twelve is who live five, point five miles more. The point, the middle, in the red, the five, the middle school students would walk, the elementary students would get a ride. The top is elementary and middle are walking if they live under point five miles. And I did not give a recommendation to bus all kids.
So maybe it just not worked.
It's probably not worked correctly.
So can you say it in plain language? Like, it might help. What does the top section, yeah, yeah, what does the top section mean versus the bottom section?
The top section, the top section is if you live over one-point, point five miles, you get a bus. If you live under point five miles, K to twelve, you don't get a bus. The red is, no, I'm sorry, the red is elementary students under point five miles get a bus, and middle school students under point, or over point five miles get a bus. So there's a differential there. I did not put in the recommendation, because again, the numbers came out later today, that all students get a bus. I think that would be the easiest. Clear this out.
Yes.
My recommendation is we bus all kids.
The numbers we were speaking of were bus all students.
There should be a period after, like, get rid of the and, put a period after Whitman, because there are two separate things, ideas. I see what you're like, there's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll have to get back to it.
Grandma.
There's a lot.
English is important.
Let's eat, Grandma.
Yeah. And, all right, so I'm going to refer to the document with the figures on here, and looking at line U to the top right, you know, transport contracted services, one-point-seven-nine-six million.
Yep.
So that's the cost that we pay to first student for all the buses.
All, yes.
Right. So I think what's missing first is, and you alluded to it too, we're not adding any buses, you know, it's sort of status quo with what we have right now. But if we can get some backup of exactly, you know, the number of buses and the ridership on those, that would help, because that's the starting number, right? Everything on the sheet is based off that one-point-seven-nine-six. And I'd just like to get an idea of what buses we are providing and what tiers and so forth on that. And then the other comment, and it has been brought up in other meetings related to, I think, regional agreement, is the division of these costs. So we're, we're talking about mandated busing. Now, this is in the regional agreement, so I know it's nothing we can change, but line Z and line AA is the sixty-forty, essentially split of mandated costs of busing, right, according to our district population. But if we look on the top left, letters A through G, the mandated kids and the miles who actually ride, it's forty-three percent Whitman, fifty-seven percent Hanson. So just to recognize that Whitman is paying a substantially large cost of this transportation when we only have forty-three percent of the riders. If you, if you read, if you reworked these numbers based on the percent of riders, line Z would be seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to Whitman, and line AA to Hanson would be one million for mandated costs based on mileage. If you look at the non-mandated busing, now we're actually recognizing the eighty percent, twenty percent, right? So Whitman is paying the larger share, two-hundred-and-eleven thousand. If you look at the actual, if we went by the district sixty-forty split, which we're using in the other one, Whitman would have an additional savings. It would be one-hundred-and-sixty thousand to Hanson's one-hundred-and-eleven thousand. So I, my question would be, does the regional agreement tell us how to split the non-mandated busing costs? The regional agreement does not.
No.
Right? So that would be a committee decision on how to split the non-mandated busing cost. And I would be in favor of using the same split that we're using for mandated, which is sixty-forty, regional agreement. So.
Can I address that?
No. No, we got a line. No, we got a line. No, we got a line. I gotta, I gotta give everyone an opportunity. So I got Glenn, I got Beth, oh, sorry, I got Michelle, Glenn, and then Beth.
Okay, you said no walkers in Hanson. Is that prohibited?
No, just.
Because I live literally, you know, right down the street from middle school my son's going to next year. He can walk if he wants.
He can walk if he wants.
He'd be the only guy in Hanson walking. Okay. And second is.
I don't think so, because I've seen a lot of them walk.
Yeah, they, I was confused. He says no walkers, but I see kids walking all the time.
They can choose.
Okay. But they're, they're included in this figure. So these aren't actual bodies in seats, because a lot of parents drive too.
Correct. These are eligible riders.
Yeah, and I remember George, I don't know if there was another company that, and I don't know if he said they build in real time. Is that an option?
That is, the company.
Pay for the body and the seat.
We are, well, so we, we try to put every eligible rider that's available.
Yeah.
Because it helps us with our seventy-five percent capacity. Because if your son's an eligible rider and you choose not to drive him someday.
So we pay for a kid that's not in a seat to hopefully get reimbursed for a kid that's not in a seat.
That's correct.
Interesting.
And but again, because of the law, the way it goes, people at the high school here will sometimes take the bus and sometimes not.
I get, no, I, trust me, I was the same all growing up.
So so that's, that's.
I'd let the bus go right by and then start walking.
Yeah.
Still get there on time, though, right?
Trying.
You all thank them.
I'm done.
Michelle.
Thank you.
I just kind of maybe need some point of clarification. I'm not sure I'm really understanding if there, we're trying to get everybody to ride the bus, how are we not needing more buses? How is there room for everybody on the bus if we're getting rid of all these walkers?
So you're really not, if you look at the numbers?
Okay.
The numbers are negligible on those, as far as the walkers that are included, at both Whitman and Hanson, and especially at the elementaries. Again, I haven't, I haven't looked at that myself, I have to trust my director. When she plugged in these numbers, and I had her plug in these numbers to make sure that we hit our seventy-five percent, and we can run with the twenty buses we have.
Okay, because you know that this is going to disastrous fall with long bus rides and overcrowding as it is, and if we're saying, oh, we can add more kids to the already overcrowded buses, I'm a little confused about that.
Just showing you, everybody Hanson has a bus anyway.
So that's not going to change.
True, true, so Whitman wasn't as, didn't have the issues Hanson had?
No. There are certain buses, but again, I'm trusting the fact that she put the, puts it in and it works through the software that we have, which is Versitrans right now.
Okay.
And I'm looking at another transportation company to do some things in real time to eliminate some of the issues too, for, again, parents that have had late buses or whatever.
Sure.
Putting a tablet in the bus and having an app so the parent knows exactly where that bus is. So that's the company that we're looking to do business with moving forward. So you'll know if the bus is late, we'll give you a communication, but you'll be able to track, you know, Mr. Glenn, who decided to not take the bus that day, he's being tracked on where the bus is.
So essentially, Whitman has that room for the walkers, whereas Hanson has.
Hanson buses everybody right now. So if we were to move this any which way to make things, if we were to say, you know, just for instance, kids under point five miles get a bus, it affects nine students in Hanson right now. That's it.
Okay, good, thank you.
I had Beth, Chris, and then Fred.
Okay, so my thing is, you have a new recommendation other than these two.
I do, yes.
Okay, and I think that's what was confusing people.
I'm sorry.
Because now when Fred brought about, you know, the amount of savings, it is actually more of a savings to Whitman if we do the third recommendation, which is to bus all the students, right?
Correct.
And, you know, I know that, you know, the towns pay for it, the regional agreement, because the school committee voted, we voted not to pay for it, we voted to bring it, to let the towns vote on their own separate lines. And that's what we've been doing. So, but, so these recommendations, you kind of go, and you like the third one, because you just figured it out this morning, so that's why it wasn't on there.
Correct.
Got it.
Chris?
Yeah, Beth kind of touched on my point of question about the non-mandated busing and the towns, you know, deciding whether or not they want to bus the kids, right? So to Dawn's point, if they're deciding who they want to bus, how are we deciding how they should pay for it?
So, two questions there. So we have always given the town our non-mandated bus, so we make a recommendation in our budget that we send to the board, and there's a budget, there's a line item for non-mandated, and it's always been per pupil or slash per mileage right now, okay? We have never made that determination to do a sixty-forty split. So we make that recommendation, and so far, the boards of selectment, along with the Fincom, have endorsed our non-mandated recommendation, especially when it lowered almost in half last year by utilizing the mileage method, getting the non-mandated costs lower and the reimburseables higher. So we've never told them how to fund it. One of the questions that came up last year was where it was placed as a line item or as an article in a town meeting. They placed it in a different line other than the school budget line, which brought about some questions. But we have never broken it down by a split, it's always been per pupil basis, and the per pupil is the mileage. So Whitman has bused all Whitman kids under, again, using the point seven, whatever, Whitman has always taken ownership of their students, and Hanson has always taken care of their, yeah, non-mandated, of their students.
Can you follow up, Chris?
Here.
So on the single.
Yes.
Document, can you, so the FY twenty-four split of non-mandated busing costs.
Yep, yes.
That is just, that's just per miles?
Yep, the actual miles.
Yep.
Whitman pays for seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine miles, and Hanson pays for one-hundred-and-ninety-nine miles.
And the two equal nine-ninety-eight point three-four?
Yes, maybe so, yes.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, I hope that, I mean, and to to address Ms. Byers and her question, the regional agreement committee is working on that transportation language and is bringing it back to their boards. So that's a topic that we had brought up.
Yeah, I think we, I think what the racket said was, let's get through this meeting to kind of hear where this is going, and then it'll come up. Fred, thank you for being patient.
No worries.
Wanted to give everyone a chance.
Yeah, and Beth had just touched on it, thank you. The regional agreement is the mechanism that each town pays for their own students. When the school committee votes our budget annually, and we are technically voting to not pay for mandated busing, if we voted to pay it, then we'd have to do it as the split. We send the bill to the town for their appropriate share of what they have for ridership. The other thing from John Stanbrook, based upon what I'm seeing, this is based on an eighty-five percent reimbursement rate, you hear things, everything's so up in the air. This year was ninety-something percent. I've heard numbers going down to the seventies, and I know there's some people talking that they want it fully funded at a hundred percent.
That would be nice and great.
Yeah, they're talking about wanting to satisfy the rural communities, and they're the ones really making the noise for a hundred percent reimbursement. I hope they can come through, because that would be even greater savings.
Thank you, Fred. Steve?
Thank you, I can totally agree with busing everyone except for those sixteen middle school students. In fact, I plowed the driveway on the corner of Coffell in twenty-seven. One of the things I want to make sure is, I talked about this before, the intersection in Selectman Kane, I know you're here, at eighteen and twenty-seven is dangerous. They thought they made it better, the traffic backs up all the way down to Coffell, and you try to cross that crosswalk, and thank goodness kids aren't there. For me, as a walker, just going out to do my regular exercise, can almost get one note on twenty-seven, because people have way too much going on. So I'd like to make sure that elementary, middle, whatever school, anything on the other side of twenty-seven and the other side of eighteen, to get a bus.
So you want everybody bussed.
Everyone except for if these kids are all on the side of whatever.
Buss everybody.
Or someone has a baby.
Anyone else, anyone else from the committee? I know we have some folks waiting, I just, I wanted to do two quick things if I can before we go public. So ride times, so we're definitely addressing that within this.
We're trying to, yeah.
We have to. So we, like, so I know Dawn was looking for some additional information, like, we got, we got to make sure we address ride times, because if we bus everyone and we have issues with ride times, to me, that's so, we don't have to do it tonight, but like, can we just make sure? That should be part of this.
I will make that statement. I need to put seventy-five percent capacity on the buses, that's the law, and that's that's something that the district hadn't done prior, we'll do our best, is where we are. But I don't know how much that will affect based even on this piece, because it's more of a of a Whitman issue around times, but I just can't add a bus unless we potentially, by putting more riders on buses, will put us into that seventy-five percent, so I can address the two issues specifically in Hanson.
Okay.
So we're working on it, I absolutely know that's an issue.
We got to address it before we kind of.
I just don't know about, I'm just being public, I don't know about a solution yet. I know we have to address it.
Okay, and then those part, second thing real quick is costs. So, you know, one of the things I think we saw during the pandemic specifically, and then we also have experienced in the past, is having buses that are empty. So, you know, I think when we talk about the mandated transportation, it's simple, right? It's it's greater than a mile and a half, the state's reimbursing us hopefully at a healthy percentage, okay. But if the towns are going to absorb the costs of non-mandated busing, which I get, like, you know, it makes sense, I also want to be careful that we don't have people that are three-quarters of a mile away, and the vast majority of them are taking the bus, and what are we doing, right? Because those are costs that we are now directly passing on to the towns as an expense. So I think, I don't know how we do that, you know, we had talked a while back about, do we charge, do we opt in, do we do something? I just, I want to avoid falling into the trap of two years from now, we're like, well, it wasn't going to cost us anything, but now we have all these empty buses. And it is costing us something, it's just not costing us more. So can we just think about that?
Sure, and that was, one of the, one of the pieces that we talked about in that, if you start reducing people from buses, that it's harder to put that seventy-five percent capacity. So if people start opting out, that hurts the capacity limit for the buses. So I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place because of that capacity limit, and the capacity limit isn't just mandated, it's all students who are eligible to ride the bus.
Okay, so, all right, so now you're clarifying, so you're, are you saying, if we have a bus, and the bus is at seventy-five percent capacity, it doesn't matter whether the seventy-five percent is comprised of non-mandated or mandated?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and that was a quote from Mr. Sullivan himself, it's just eligible ridership as the town determines, or as the district determines eligible ridership.
So, okay, you answered my question, all right. Hold on, I think we, I want to go, I want to get to the public, did you already go or not yet?
I didn't, and I just have something very quick about ride times. So bus stops, like, I live on Gorwin Drive, which is probably two miles long, and I think it probably takes the Indian bus twenty minutes to get up and down it, because it doesn't stop a quarter of a mile from everybody's house, it stops at everybody's house. And if you, I mean, it stops at my house, and then it stops a house, like, there's a house, and then stops at another house. We are not a quarter of a mile away, which this is what it says, so if we're not going to change the number of students on the buses, looking at that might alleviate some of the ride times.
So I agree with you a hundred percent, because I found through this transport, that bus drivers do their own thing.
Well, there we go.
And that's why I want a tablet on the bus, so I know where they stop. But that's, I'm telling parents, if there's a set bus stop, because bus drivers do their own thing.
Yeah, great point.
So I, when parents say, well, this, I then call Karen, and I yell at first student, and the bus driver's like, well, yeah, I stop it along the way.
Right, no wonder.
So, so, yeah, I understand that, and that's, again, the technology piece for us to be able to track and then shout at parents, this is the bus stop, and I can see where the bus stops. Because we've also had parents who have called and said, the bus didn't stop at my house, and, you know, first student can see, first student has GPS in their bus, so they can verify that it stops, but I want, I want my own device to be able to see that. So I hear you, and we're addressing that.
All right, great. Thank you for indulging our discussion, so public comment, if you could just give us your name and.
Well, first of all, just thanks for the thorough discussion and the analysis, and so obviously, you put a lot of time into this and trying to get it, you know, efficient and all those things, because lots of layers. For me tonight, just quickly, speaking as a parent and a teacher really, I think what we want is, we want more kids with better sleep, and we want kids with better exercise. I think those are two, as far as I'm concerned as a teacher, that's the two best things you can do as a teacher. If a child has no sleep, and a child has more exercise. Practicing, speaking, teaching, wanting the school to get more exercise, research, you know, so. I know it's complex and there's a lot of layers, but we want less kids on the buses, and we want more kids walking on a regular basis. I think that's in line with the strategic plan that helps with the social emotional stuff. There's tons of research inside and out about sleep and exercise. And I think, you know, of course, we have to think about the numbers, but just to solve a math equation by giving all students a ride of a bus and taking away some crossing guards could, in a sense, send the wrong message that, you know, for safety reasons, we want kids on the bus. Really, I think we want kids walking, and if that means we need more crossing guards, we need to be more careful about the way kids walk to school, then those are, I think that's another way of discussion that I think just needs to be added on, because really, like I said, with my own children, I want them to get up early, to walk to school, so they have exercise, so they can be more focused on the classroom and all those sorts of things. Just one more way of thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathleen Otino, point five, briefly for Washington Street. Whitman, I'm on the Whitman Finances Committee, I'm also on the Regional Agreement Committee, and we are going to talk about transportation on twenty-seventh February. So I'll express my concern tonight about the finances of this presentation, and it's depending on John to confirm my concerns. It's my understanding that the specific costs, the set costs for the transportation, about one-point-seven-to-twenty-eight million dollars, and that total cost is relied on the total miles that are, that children bus. And the total miles you add to the busing are less per mile reimbursement. So for every student that would go on the bus, they show me the trouble that would happen on this one. Every, the reimbursement rate is based on the mileage cost, because the road is limited. And only the students who live one-point-five miles or more from school will qualify for reimbursement, so the more kids you put on the bus, the lower the town's reimbursement, or the district's reimbursement, which increases the amount that we set to the town of Hanson and Whitman for non-reimbursed costs. And it's great that it was ninety-five percent reimbursement this year, there were years that it was sixty percent. And so I'd love it to be a hundred percent, but we're paying the risk here, and so I hope that there are decisions made in my mind, because the finances are not as clear. And John, I'd like you to correct me on that, that we increase the number of students by the number of miles on the bus, the per mile reimbursement rate. The bus don't go up and increase the number of miles and the reimbursement rate, because the number of reimbursement miles won't change because the number of courses, just getting non-mandated miles is going to reduce the reimbursement rate and increase the cost to the customer. So don't get this clear, because there's this lots of numbers played that is this presented.
Yeah, and Kathleen, so I think these are, you know, we're getting a bunch of takeaways here, so I think, let's not lose track of the takeaways.
Not at all.
This is kind of the first pass, there's a lot of pieces, and I think, yes, anyone that wants to make sure we're doing it right, appreciate it, so we can certainly look at that. Yes?
Hello, Amy, three-one-hundred, writing out to Whitman. I'm just keeping my eye on the time, and I have to leave, I think there are times I'll get my other kids, so I didn't speak at the public comment upfront, so thirty-eight will be a little after, I need to get my other one's email.
Sure.
I'm just following up regarding the email that I sent the committee last week advocating for the superintendent's option number one. I, just to be fair, I wasn't expecting a vote this evening, I, this is my opportunity to speak in person, so I felt a lot of energy earlier, and I'm not looking to enhance that energy, I'm considering to tone it down, or encourage healthy communication, okay? So, while I appreciate that the matter of start times and transportation is complex, my motivation for having these conversations over the past nine months is not complex. Science proves repeatedly that adolescents, primarily middle adolescents, twelve, fourteen to seventeen-year-olds, have a later shift in circubine with us. To be clear, I advocate for all students in Whitman-Hanson's district to have healthy start times, preferably a break through, as the medical field. I was disappointed to see that one of the three options reported by the superintendent's office did not include a healthy start time for each student in the district. I am left to wondering how much it would actually cost to switch the high school's start time to eight AM or preferably eight thirty AM. I am interested in finding out how much that shift alone would impact the budget, apart from investing the educational inequity issue among secondary graders. To be clear, I am also in support of educational equity within our district. Last summer, the vast majority of you all, I believe all but one of you, voted in favor of having the superintendent's office look into what it would take to push back the start times of the high school. The need has not changed in the last two months. Your students remain vulnerable to sleep deprivation, most of them are sleep deprived. They are suffering from anxiety disorders, mood disorders, substance issues, disorder dating, and other physical illnesses that are impacted by the school's early start The state of California has voted a law into place requiring no public middle school start before eight AM, and no public high school start before eight-thirty AM. The states New York, New Jersey, and Maine are considering similar bills to study the impact of early start times for teens out, and to mandate that they cannot start before a certain time. This is a national issue, one that is not going away. I encourage you to take this opportunity, as well as the opportunity to, over the next several months, to do right by all of our students, and let's not be one of the last towns in Massachusetts to give our kids a healthy start time.
Great, thank you. Any other public comments not relating to start times, because I think we haven't covered that, and we are on item two-B of an agenda that has about twenty items on it. So if we can hear from the superintendent on start times and what our thoughts are, do you have something on transportation or start times?
I just wanted to give an update, I did talk.
So just your transportation?
The transportation.
Great, if you just give us your name and street, please.
First, for the transportation, I had very big concerns regarding the busing for my students that are at Indian Head School. I, I'm happy to report that it has gotten better. The, you know, there are less issues. My children are home quicker because there isn't an issue with bus drivers knowing where they're supposed to go. They were on the bus for almost an hour every day. Now, they're closer to about half an hour, and the bus monitors that were put into place very quickly. Because it's not a consistent person, it's not the be-all, end-all solution, but I am happy to share that there's much less tiers. It, it is a better situation. We also, on our bus, thought, hey, we loved bus driver back, who has the bus rundown and who has the best interest of the children for their safety and taking care of them. So, for the transportation, I just have one question about the transportation. There was a mention that students would only walk a quarter of a mile to their bus stop. Is that accurate?
So, that's, that's supposed to be?
Oh.
It's supposed to be. That's, that's in our guideline. And again, it's supposed to be a quarter of a mile in elementary and a half mile in secondary.
Half mile in secondary.
No.
Up to?
Up to.
Okay.
Now, that's supposed to be. But again, I, I've heard different stories of drivers just picking up where they choose to pick up. So, I, again, I'm trying to settle that into, it's, it's supposed to be a quarter mile and a half mile.
Okay. And then, regarding the start time, I will not discuss it because I understand that that is...
Or you can just, just hang out. Like, we'll, we'll talk about it.
I'm happy to talk further later. I just, I feel like there's other sides to the, to the coin that we do have to consider besides that's the high school's requirement, that they feel like they need to have a later start time. There's other people in district that would be impacted by that, so I just want to make sure that that's addressed as well.
Okay. Jim, you got something? For those that, for the, for the few that don't know, you don't, for the few that don't know you, can you give us your name?
I'm Vicki, area of Henson, Mass. I, I'll try to be as quick as I can. Selecting Kane took a lot of my time up, so. I, I can remember being in the, whatever grade, it doesn't matter, elementary school, and I was bused every day. And then, I got into junior high, and I had to walk, and the schools were right next to each other. And, you know, I, my kids will tell you that I, I walked to school both ways uphill with no shoes. It was snow. Yeah, but when it's raining, and a kid has to walk a mile, or when it's snowing, or when it's cold, and maybe they don't, and maybe it's not their fault, maybe they don't have the appropriate shoes on. I think every kid should be bused. I'm worried about, and I'm not from Whitman, but I'm worried about those 16 middle schoolers that have to go across 27 and 18.
Well, that, yeah, I'd like to see it not...
And I understand that it would have to go before the towns to be voted in, you know, on the non-mandated busing. That would be a cost. But Jeff, and, you know, the acoustics here aren't that great, but I thought you said it would be an extra $28,000 to Whitman.
Give or take, yeah. That's what, that, that was an number?
The crossing guard is $41,000.
I know that is a fix, yes.
So, it would save $13,000. And, you know, according to the, and I, I just got this after the meeting started, that if we needed to put on another bus, we could do that, or we would have to do that. We wouldn't have a choice. And with the regional agreement, one of the things that we are looking at is to make sure that people, after we leave, Chris, Chris, myself, and Jasmine, who are the four voting members, that the regional agreement is looked at every three years. So that if one or two people are gone, including on the school committee, that this would be reviewed three years from now or four years from now. So that we're always up one. And I'll be real quick with this, because Dawn came to our meeting the other night, and there was a collaboration between the two towns and the school to get a soccer field fixed. But it's $400,000, and Dawn brought that up because it hasn't been used in 12 years. So, by doing something like this and looking at it tonight, once it gets, or hopefully passes, and with the regional agreement being reviewed every three years, we're not looking to fix a school field that's going to cost over $400,000. I, I just want people to start thinking ahead, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now, when maybe we're not on the boards anymore.
Yeah, I'll be dead.
And I do really think it's important that, you know, all children should be bused so that we don't have, you know, a situation we're spending a lot of time talking about. So, Chris, don't recognize this person.
So, so, I really would like to move on to start times. I'm happy to recognize you, but if I recognize you, if anyone else on the committee wants to speak, I'm going to recognize them too, so.
I just have a quick question for Jeff on the contract.
Yeah.
It's not in the contract with our busing, transportation company, on pickup locations or distance or anything like that?
No, no, it's just bus, buses and tiers. So, so, they want to know, I can't ask for more than 25% more buses in a year. Okay, that's in the contract. So, so, and when I get to this, I'm asking for three buses. If they care about tiers and buses, they don't care about the day, they assign those drivers as it goes.
Well, I just, it's, is, is, when's the contract out?
I think, John, we're in year two, right? We got one more year, one more fiscal year.
Was it an option to extend for two?
Yeah, hang on, hang on, hang on. Keep going, Chris.
Um...
We have the contract, we have the contract for two years.
We have the contract for one more year.
Right, so, would, would, should we be thinking about writing it into the contract, you know, to your point about Gorwin Drive? That would not...
We, they, the driver should be following our guidelines, period.
We set the bus stops. I think that's...
Yeah, we set the bus stops. We do. Yeah, we do.
Then why are they doing what they want? And for how long have they been doing what they want?
See, when it, when it...
And how has that been allowed to happen?
So, short answer, when, when nobody complains that the child's getting dropped off at the house and things roll well, we, we wouldn't know. Again, we don't have the tracking devices on the buses. We, you know, we get there, the buses go. That came out this year because of some folks saying, "Hey, look, it's taking a long time." So, we started looking at different drivers who are accommodating different people. So, again, trying to, and I, I don't want to throw it on First Student, but the driver shortage has impacted who we have, and they just, they are doing, if a kid's like, "Drop me off here," they're dropping them off there. I believe if we could have the technology, it should firm up in both sides of, of the tracks, in both communities, so that if the stop is, the designated stop is the designated stop, that'll happen. So, we assign the stops.
And that, is that in the contract?
Yeah, we assign the stops, yes.
So, they're not abiding by the contract?
The, the...
They haven't been for...
Correct.
It's interesting.
But no parent's going to complain that their kid's getting picked up at their house?
Sorry. Are you also, yeah?
I'm also, thank you.
Anyone else?
No parent's going to complain that their kid gets picked up at their house, you know? That's why it's never been brought up.
But on the other end, right, like...
The time. I get it. I complain about the time, but I'm also happy that my kid gets picked up at my house, you know?
All right, I see your problem, your problem. All right, let's get to start times, please.
So, so, again, start times, I, let me just give you a little history. 2012, in principle, the high school, the district is looking at a, at a budget deficit. The district made the commitment, or the, the statement, that we will reduce, or we will change start times across the district, pushing the high school from 7:25 to 7:05 for supposed to be a short duration, the middles to a certain time, and shifting the elementary schools to three different times, or different times to stagger or eliminate and close to $400,000 or $500,000 of, of transportation costs, which at that time, going to Mrs. Oteena and Mr. Small, about 65% of reimbursement from the state. So, this year, again, living, living the 7:05, working with kids for quite a bit, we did some, some, some research, formed a team, talked to a bunch of kids. The scenario that was mentioned about that I took off was a scenario that would put the high school start, the middle school start time at 7:45, the high school at eight, a little bit after eight, and aligning the three elementary schools. One was at the expense of adding 13 buses. First of all, I can't do it in the contract. Secondly, Karen, my transportation director, said, "You're never going to get the drivers." First Student does not have those drivers right now. And then, the added cost of, you know, about $400,000, $500,000 to do that. So, taking that into account, we came up with three different scenarios, and I have to add, we wanted to align the elementaries to a six-and-a-half-hour day that the fifth graders at Hanson have. So, aligning this up, the high schools are six-and-a-half, 6:35, the middle schools are 6:35, and the elementaries are 6:30 or 6:35, give or take how we have to, to work the buses into this. So, I have three scenarios for folks to look at up here, and the added costs to start times is really aligning the elementary schools, adding three buses and tiers. And if you just shift to the right before I even go through the times, aligning any of those scenarios is going to cost me $10,000 per day, times 180 days, and this is where the numbers that I had in the past were incorrect. Looking at a 1.908, 651, projected as John's numbers gave me today, 1,694, 1,32. And again, I didn't add this to the operating budget because I see this as a one-time cost with a reimbursable next year at maybe 85%. We would add it to the operating budget next year. But that's the cost that would, for any of these scenarios, the 214 would be the cost that I'd have to write the check to First Student for next year, give or take a little bit based upon the projections that we have right now. So, scenario one, much to what Noah kind of talked about a little bit, is moving the middle school to a 7:20 start. And, and again, I'm going back to Karen has, has told me she could maybe do a 35-minute in-between time, but 40 minutes is better based upon if a driver gets stuck in railroad tracks or whatever, and we have railroad tracks in both communities. 40 minutes in-between times, so 7:20 to 7:50, or to 1:50, 8:00 to 2:35, 8:40 to 3:10. Again, we can fluctuate those times, give or take five minutes here and there, but if you fluctuate the start time, you're fluctuating the end time and bus rides home if it's a half an hour, give or take. Scenario one aligns the elementaries, puts the high school at an 8 o'clock start, and the middle at a 7:20 start. I've heard pros and cons from students and staff on both of those, and I'll, I'll give me my opinion in, in a little bit. Scenario two, high school moves up 15 minutes, gets dismissed at 1:55, middle schools at 8, dismissed at 2:30, elementaries 8:40 to 3:10. And folks out there, this is going to be on the website tomorrow under Transportation, so you folks can, can talk about this. Again, no decision's going to be made tonight. Scenario three is a 7:05 start to a 1:40, similar, exactly now, 7:45 to 2:15 at the middle, exactly like we have now, and moving the elementaries to an alignment of 8:25 to 2:55. All these scenarios are going to cost the district $214,000. Again, my recommendation is not to add it to the operating budget, as I can see 85% to 90% coming back next year. These are what I have right now as adjustments to the start times and aligning the elementaries. The next page is another thing I put together, actually, today, is our current schedule on the left. This is what you have on the left of the high school, the middle school, Conley, Duval, and Indian Head. And this is just shifting the start times of the high school and middle schools, which could interchange again, and keeping the elementaries at this, at, at the differentials. This is no cost to the district, but not adding the additional time of a half an hour to the elementaries. And I didn't put it in this slide because I did it in the slide after. So, the slide after, again, is, is no cost, is no cost to the district, but moving the high school or middle schools interchangeable again, moving the, keeping the elementaries at different start times and different end times, and adding the half hour to the end time at that. The one hesitation I have right there is Duval Elementary is getting out at 3:45.
Yeah, that sucks.
So, so, again, I wanted to try to show, and, and if people in the gallery and in the committee have other things they want me to put together, I can absolutely put them together. The last two slides are no cost to the district because it doesn't put the elementaries in a consistent timeframe. Duval is, is the challenge because of shifting buses between Conley and Duval and, and the tiers. So, I'm close with an alignment of start times, but it's that not adding any buses puts me at, at a disservice. So, again, I can come up with different scenarios to do this. This is what we have right now, or, and I can adjust again as we continue this dialogue. The other piece of, of this, it, it varies. Again, I go to Noah and, and the, and the folks. I sat in with 11, I went to 11 classrooms, freshmen to, to juniors. I did not talk to my seniors. They would give me bad information. Because they would say, "I did it," so it doesn't matter. The, the key piece that, yeah, I think kids want a later start time at the high school, but another piece that they've told me is they don't want to leave past 2 o'clock. They don't want to get out at 2:30. And again, it's been back and forth, and I said, "I can't do both ways." The state kind of says, "You got to go to school." So, coming up with some differentials, the, the challenge is, again, the, the elementary pieces. So, I did hear kids, "Yeah, I'd like to go later, even 7:20." And, and people have referenced, "Well, what time, Mr. Simonick, did you use to start?" And he said, "7:25." I know it doesn't hit research, but again, the student population has, has told me they don't want to go after 2, and that's not everyone. Again, people have different opinions, but that's something for the committee to consider and parents to consider, that, and I, and I look at, if we look at a 2:30 end time, I don't want to go past 2:30 because that will impact after-school events, extracurriculars and athletics, especially the seasonal athletics that don't have lighted fields or play indoors. Speaking now on behalf of, of a husband, of a teacher, who students get out at 2:45, multiple days of the week, her students are getting dismissed at 2:15 in the fall, and so far, in the winter, to go to games. This time, it was the freshman girls' basketball team, and I have to hear it at home. So, again, it's just that piece of it. Mr. Rogers has kind of assured me, if we can get out, kids out at 2:30, he can get kids to games without affecting classroom. So, that 8 o'clock piece for me works, give or take five minutes. The five minutes at the end of the high school day, they're doing some announcements, and if kids miss five minutes of class, specifically sometimes, it wouldn't be the, the end of the world. So, these are, these are scenarios, again, to dialogue and discuss. The, the financial impact, and again, if there's another scenario that you want me to put together, I most certainly will. But the financial impact really is to align the three elementaries. The goals were to give options on different start times, no matter what, trying to enhance or length, to, to come in later at the high school or the, or earlier in the middle school, but that was one of the goals, and to align the elementaries with a six-and-a-half-hour day so that we wouldn't have the differential between fifth grade at Hanson and fifth grade at Conley and Duval.
Okay. Chris, Michelle, and Frank.
Yeah, so, I just want to start off by saying I, I never want to discourage students from voicing their concerns or thoughts, or we should always make an effort to, to reach out and get those, but I think there are lots of instances where we rely on science rather than what kids want to do, until when it comes to their safety and well-being. And if the science says they should start later, then we should probably go with the science before we go with the kids saying what they want. You know, we have, we have, you know, all kinds of policies and laws in place that, you know, in some ways protect kids from what they might do if laws weren't there, you know? So, I just want to...
Sure. I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
But I, you know, on that, I just wanted to say, talk to kids.
Sure, no, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chris, Michelle.
So, I have a few notes I'd like to talk about. So, this 8 a.m. start time for the high school is at the expense of the middle school, which means the middle school students would have to be up at 7:20. That's just that one scenario. I am absolutely not for saying that the high school students' sleep is more important than the middle school students'. So, I'm not about to say to those families that the high school sleep, students deserve more sleep than any of those middle school students. I, as a school committee member, care about all the students in the district. We have received several emails saying that the high school students are out later than the middle school students. I have two high school students right now during the week when they get home at 4:15 from their sports practice. My middle school student gets home at 9:15 from her basketball practice. So, it's not that cut and dry at all times. Saying that the high, the high school students get out of school at 2:30 when we play in the Patriot League for our athletes, that means they're rushing to get on a bus. When are they going to their clubs? When are they going to National Honor Society? When are they going to get extra help? When are they making up tests? That doesn't seem realistic to me. Saying that Bob Rogers is great, he's wonderful, he can get them to their games, but they're missing all their extracurricular... but they're missing all their extracurricular activities if they're, if we're getting out of school at 2:30. I also would like to talk about the fact that we're so focused on the early start times, but the CDC recommends reasonable curfews at night for students. What time are these kids going to bed? Are we having media curfews? Are we putting kids to bed without computers, video games, phones, and TVs at reasonable times? And I'm very passionate about this because I have high school students and it is not easy to put them to bed at night without a phone. But the phones are left in the kitchen and they go to bed without cell phones, and that's it. So if we're worried about their mental health, their social, emotional stability, then take the phones and put them to bed at night. It isn't the only option to get the sleep in the morning. Why are we not worried about their sleep at night? We seem to be forgetting that piece. Why are we so hyper-focused on the fact that we have these early start times? Which yes, our start times are early. I want to address that. I'm all for that. I've been through this. I have four children. I get it. But I don't want to adjust the high school start times, forgetting about our middle school students because sleep is important for everybody. And I don't want to forget the fact that we can put them to bed early. High school students can be parented. Put them to bed without phones. Let's make sure we're taking care of it from within. You can't just blame the school and say it's the early start times. And I also just want to say, and this is important to note, the last start time, January 19, there was 168 students that were tardy. That's 34% of received consequences for being tardy because it was their second time. I received a lot of replies that that was because of traffic. I drive my kids to school, the traffic was no worse than it is at the 7:05 start time. That tells me that when you give the kids an hour later to sleep, then they're staying up later at night. So we have to know that when kids know they can sleep late, they're going to stay up later at night. So there's a lot of layers to this. It isn't an easy fix. We have to be very mindful when we make these decisions. We have to make sure that all of the students are impacted in an appropriate way. All of the kids are taken care of. I'm all for changing these start times. But I just want to be sure that everyone knows that it isn't just changing for the high school and no one else because you have to think about all of our students. I think everyone on the committee wants to be sure that all of our students are taken care of.
I have Fred and then Don Buss. I know Lisa's got to go. It's getting late and we need to vote a contract. And she is our municipal representative. Do you mind if we take, does anyone, okay if we just take a 60-second timeout from this conversation? And we'll get that done real quick because we do need to do that. Lisa, are you still here? Come on up, come on up. Is that okay? Well, I'm not going to shortchange this, but she's our municipal representative. So we do have on the agenda tonight the ratification of the Unit B contract and vote. I would entertain a motion to vote the contract as presented.
So who?
Second.
What's that?
Got motion and second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? And you vote as well on this one. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone against abstaining? Great. Jay, you got that? Thank you so much. Thank you. No, I know you got, no, no worries. All right. Sorry for that brief commercial introduction and we're back. So I got Fred, Don, and then Hillary. Okay, Fred. And then I'll come, and then I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity before you go twice.
Thanks. I'm assuming we're not voting because.
Not a vote today.
Yeah, I mean, and I love the debate. And thank you for getting the CDC guidelines. I find those interesting. I'm still doing some research myself, so very much appreciated hearing as many different viewpoints as possible. You stated the financial impact. Does this have to be bargained with the unions and could there be an impact there?
It has to be bargained because the start, the school start time or school times are in the contract. But I can't start a negotiation or an impact bargain until we have a decision here. You know, I, we've talked, we've talked all year that it might be coming. You know, so the evidence and you are fully aware. But because this is in the contract as each school has a time, it would have to be a back bargain, correct?
Good for now. Don and then Hillary.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for presenting this, Jeff. It's complicated because we have the three issues, right? The equity piece of the six-and-a-half hours and the alignment to the buildings and, you know, healthy start times. I appreciate you saying that the 8 o'clock works based on the dismissal time. I really hope that maybe we could continue to look at these times. And I appreciate you saying that Karen acknowledges right now there's 35 minutes in between. Is it 35, right? 7:05 to 7:40 is the morning bus time. But you're making recommendations for 40 minutes, you know? Because I don't want to see anyone going to school at 7:20 AM. I don't. Really, you know, it would be awesome, the best, if, you know, everyone could go between that sweet time, right? 8 o'clock, 8:30. So if there's any way we can, we can keep middle school at 7:40, we can shift, you know, or 7:35, 8:05, get something that works there. I don't know if that's, that's an option. But what's most important is that we make sure we pay attention to facts versus the myths. Talk about science and recognizing wellness of students. It's social, emotional wellness. It's, you know, physical wellness and the sleep, nutrition. We have a wellness program, right? We talk about nutrition and what they eat and the meals they have. So we want to recognize the benefits of sleep and when they can sleep, going to bed at certain times. I think what, what no one wants to admit is that right now we are hurting kids. Truthfully, we are. And that's hard to say. We aren't intentional about that. But with the 7:05, it can't continue. We can make improvements. The biggest concern that I heard was, you know, if we flip-flop middle school and high school and there are other towns who've done it. So the middle school students are the first ones to arrive in the town at school and they're the first ones to arrive at home. So I, I have, I have two children. And there was a time when my oldest was the first child. There was no high schooler available to greet my child at the door. So there's been a discussion over, you know, a middle school child needs that high school, that older sibling to be there. Well, there had to have been a time where there was never an older sibling there. So it fell upon me as a parent to arrange a responsible person to be there for my kids. Childcare is my responsibility as a parent, as a family, to do that. As a district, I sit here as a school committee member and need to advocate for the healthy times that support the larger student body. And that's why I want to keep the middle schoolers at not such an early time of 7:20. But if they remain the first students home, I think that there are accommodations that families can do because it has been done, you know, throughout the years. But these choices are difficult because they don't necessarily support the 8:30 time. But there are problems to be solved, so.
Thank you, Don. I got Hillary and then Glenn.
I'm going to start by saying that like I, I'm really concerned by this because I think that while the intentions are good, right? I don't think anyone on this committee is ignoring research. We know what the science says. And I asked this in one of our working groups this summer. If the science says, the American Academy of Pediatrics calls middle school and high school should not start before 8:30, right? That's what it says. Why do, I mean, if you look at the Patriot League, three schools, three. Two of those have their middle school and high school. And actually, Situate isn't 8:30. Duxbury is the only one that's 8:30. Two of those have their middle schools and high schools together, right? Duxbury is a 6 through 12. So there's no busing situations, issues there. And, and so there's a bigger issue. And I think it would be wonderful if Massachusetts could have a funded mandate about school start times, just like California. I have a 4th grader who will be a 5th grader next year. And, and I also have a 1st grader and a 3rd grader. And I got here tonight after I had just woken my 1st grader up from a nap. She fell asleep on the couch because she was tired. She's in 1st grade. She goes to school for six hours or however long the day is. And she doesn't just come home. She does things after school. So does my 3rd grader. So does my 4th grader. This morning, he did not wake up until 8 o'clock. Now thankfully, he doesn't have to be to school until 8:50. Part of the problem that I have, right? And I think it's been lost that it's out when you present concerns, because we say all the time that we're a pre-K to 12 district. When you present concerns, it sounds like you're against something or against change, right? I receive that a lot. I'm a teacher. If I were against change, I would have lost my job a long time ago. That, that is not, that's not how it is. It's, it's we're a pre-K to 12 district. And we have to look at what is collectively good for all, not for some. I think the narrative that younger kids don't do anything is false. I coach a soccer team and I coach my daughter's soccer team and my daughter's basketball team. And because the parents who volunteer work, our practices don't start until 5, 6, 7 o'clock in the evening. So the kids who actually are doing better and get out of school or are the high school kids getting home at 4:15 because they're done with their day. And now they can have free time to go to Chick-fil-A and Chick-fil-A and do those things. I teach high school. I know this is what they do. I think that we're dangerous in assuming things about families. I think when we talk about equity, the 5th graders we're talking about are only Hanson 5th graders. Because there isn't a Y program at Hanson Middle School. There's a Y program at Duval and there's a Y program at Conley, which is very expensive, by the way. And so those families, you know, it doesn't affect me, so it's going to be okay. And I see this, like my son is responsible. And am I comfortable leaving him home? Yeah, I am. But that's not for everybody. And it's not my job to assume nor to tell another family what they should do or how they should parent. Might I remind everybody, we are dealing with children, the 5th graders, the kids who will be in 5th grade next year were in 1st grade when the world shut down. So these are kids who didn't have the opportunity to develop responsibility and social skills and like things like that your children had or your children had because they're older. We need to remember all of these things when we're making these decisions. Is that the end-all be-all of this argument? Absolutely not, right? And I recognize that. But it's, it's a factor. It certainly is a factor. And the problem is too, middle school parents don't know this is happening. Hanson middle school parents don't know, right? And so we haven't engaged all stakeholders. The 20 emails that we received said the same thing and were from high school parents. Okay? And until I saw people this weekend at the fields, it was like, hey, like, because I didn't know if it was, I was like, oh, we're voting on this? Like, because it was news to me. Then we started to see maybe the other side of things. We need, if this is something we want to do, we have to educate all of our families. A kindergartner who maybe went to preschool for half a day, three days a week, is now going to go to school for six-and-a-half hours? And what are we doing with that extra time, right? Because our 5th graders at Hanson are in a secondary school and Desi does not say that 5th grade and 5th grade has to be the same. They say time on learning is for elementary and time on learning is for secondary. So there's not a grade by grade. So the equity piece I'm struggling with with that, with the time, we don't have a robust related arts program at our elementary schools. In Marshfield and Situate, where their elementary kids go for six-and-a-half hours, they have chorus, they have strings, they have arts, they have robotics. We don't have that. So are we just throwing time on the day just to check a box? What are we going to do? Are my kids just going to sit in a desk for 25 more minutes? Because I don't want that. And the teachers aren't going to want it either. So I just, there are so many moving pieces. But I want to end by saying like I am 100% in favor of getting healthy start times for all of our students. But I think we have, we've seen some tunnel vision and we need to, we need to open it up. And we need to get out there with, with the solutions to this problem.
Thank you, Glenn. And then if no one else, we'll go back around to.
Like Hillary said, there's no ideals. There's way too many moving parts. There's no ideal solution here. The average start time Massachusetts is 7:50. I just looked that up. And in the country, it's about 8 o'clock. There's not, there's not a, Alaska starts at 8:30. That's the only state in our entire country that starts at 8:30. So I mean, you go to bed at 10 and you wake up at 6, that's eight hours of sleep. You go to bed at 10:30 and wake up at 6:30, that's still eight hours of sleep. You still get to school on time. It's a lot of money and a lot of moving parts for, like you said, 20 emails. How many people truly want this besides voices we hear here? So I'm not, I'm not sold.
Anyone else from the committee before we start going second? David and then.
Not necessarily pertaining to start times or transportation. But in terms of parental input, I do just want to note that it was very nice to see, you know, whether it was 20 or 30 emails of parents getting involved. Because since I've been on the school committee, there's very few instances that I've seen parental outreach that much. So maybe that is the opinion of the few.
They all said the same.
A lot of them did repeat from the original letter that Annie Gray had, but not all of them were verbatim that exact thing. But the fact of the matter is they took the time to reach out to the school committee and voice their opinion, whether it was the same thing over and over. And it's nice to have their input. It's nice to have student input here. And these are things that we really haven't had much of in the past. So regardless of how you feel personally about the situation, and we're going to continue to evaluate and figure out the best place and the best position to put our students in a position to succeed, it's nice to see parents getting involved, giving their input. And it gives us another perspective to consider. Because, you know, we're, we're only an individual. We only have through what we perceive things. And it's nice to really see other feedback and whether it's from a professional trying to provide science for us to look into, to evaluate start times. It's just great to see input and hear other perspectives. So I just want to say to parents out there, thank you for reaching out. Middle school parents, elementaries, parents, if you're out there too, please email us and reach out and give your input. And I love to see you guys there at March 15th when we go to vote on the budget. I'd like to see you there at March 1st when we go to vote for school choice and give your input then. I'd love to see you May 1st at town meeting. And I'd love to see the third week of May on Saturday to go vote at the election. So please stay involved, continue to get involved. And we're going to get where we need to be. But you guys have to stay involved to hold us accountable or otherwise things aren't going to get done. So thank you. Continue to stay involved and I appreciate it.
Chris.
David took all my thunder.
So I got two quick things, then we can go to public. So one is just to take a giant step back. So if we wanted to have a uniform start time for every school, the two issues would be, we need a whole bunch of, an extra fleet of buses. And it would be a massive cost. So again, because I think there's some folks that may be watching this or listening to this for a first time. And it is, it's a complicated issue and we're trying to deal with individuals. And the more I get to know individuals, every single person is different. It's a whole host of needs. It's hard. It's hard to solve this for how many people? 28,000 or so that live in the two communities combined. So it's a lot. If we went back to this one.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Are we, so, so again, I want to make sure I understand. So what we're saying is because of those busing, transportation issues and again, trying to keep an iron cost, we need 40-minute increments? Is that kind of the gist of it? So we could move, you know, that one 10 minutes and, but then the rest of it would also follow.
So if you, if you move the high school in scenario two to 7:30, Duval's getting out at 3:20 or the elementaries are getting out at 3:20.
So I guess to David's point, what I would really like to hear from parents is, so we know the early part, right? I think, you know, we have the study, we have input from folks. There's certainly a concern about starting school too early. But we need to understand the backend, right? So if we know, it doesn't even matter what school. If we know the first school starts at 8, for example, then the last school is going to go until 3:30. So is 3:30 too late? Like, I think that's what we got to kind of understand. Again, I'm not advocating we say the high school starts at 8. But if it did, it's 8:00 to 2:15. You know, then the middle schools, 8:40. Elementary is not going to get done until 3:30. So is that, is that an option? Is it not? So I think for folks listening, to David's point, let us know. But I think we need more information from more people to have an informed decision.
So one of the pieces I wanted to do after this meeting was to send a school committee briefing because this is an important topic to the families. These are the scenarios that are being discussed at school committee to provide you that feedback because not everybody's watching.
Right, and I think my ask is, as much as this is going to be open Pandora's box, just let us know what people's individual thoughts are. us know what people's individual thoughts are because I think that's what we need to know. So, Chris. Public comment? Yes, Chris, if you could give us your name.
Chris, what's on the line? One thing I heard maybe I'll address for us is I think I'm hearing a lot of people talk about science and saying, well, if you go to bed at 10 and you wake up at six or you go to bed at 11 and you wake up at seven, it's the same thing. It's not, right? The science says it's above the circadian rhythm, which means starting school and starting learning time before those times is a problem, right? So repeating that, those kinds of statements kind of takes away from what we're trying to say, right? The science says that they should not start before that time. I don't disagree that going for that long time is not a problem. People know, I have a couple of my own kids, I have a hockey player, go work, sport.
It's not good for sleep time.
In terms of late practices and early starts and everything else, right? Like those are family decisions, right? So a couple of things that I would remind people, you generally don't have regular elementary and middle school events that start at seven o'clock at night. There was an athletic bus that just pulled up here not long, a few minutes ago, right? But we have school sponsored high school events that go till day to night. If we're not willing to move the start time, are we prepared to tell our margins, you can't have a seven o'clock basketball game? Are we prepared to no longer have rest of the means in the gym at night? Right? Because those are the things that you need to start doing if you can't adjust the front end. I don't think any of these things are ideal. I understand the bus situation probably as much as anybody else. What I would encourage you to do is to look at this as a phase approach. I would say this is what we can do today. In my opinion, moving the high school affects the most amount of kids and is the best choice for our current student population, but that has to come with a statement that we've got a five-year plan or seven-year plan or whatever the plan is to get ourselves in line. We know at some point if California, New York, New Jersey kept on this, just like All Day K, Massachusetts is going to be a day or two. I would beg you not to do what we did with All Day K. Do not wait. Do not be one of the last communities to provide that to our students. It's that simple. We waited too long with All Day K. It took us forever to get there for $215,000 one time. We can make an adjustment that helps a large body of our, the large piece of our student body. Is it good for everybody? No, it's not. But those are the choices we have to make. You have to make the best choices that you can. No one's got a magic wand that says we can do it for everybody, but we shouldn't do nothing because we can't do it for everybody. So.
Thank you, Chris.
And the only other point I'll make, that is something, my kids aren't in district anymore. They get up after the high school bus comes to their neighborhood. That's, that's a big deal. They both play, they both do after, after school activities, they both play sports. My kids don't even get home until 4:30 in the afternoon and they still do top sports, they still do club teams, they still do extracurricular activities. So I get they compress the day a little bit, but there's still plenty of time in the day when you get out of school at three o'clock.
Thank you. All right, just get one more public and then we can do another round with committee. Yes.
I actually saw the research. So the other concern that I wanted to make share and clarify was that I did feel like there was more of a focus on this survey that was sent out just to high school. It was lovely, but it was very specific and I don't think it was clear about how it would impact middle and elementary school families. It was, you know, would it be beneficial? 100%. I work in a district, a very big district. I'm a middle school guidance counselor. My expertise is middle school. I have two children in elementary school, one who will be going to Hanson Middle School next year and the other who will be going in two years. I do care about this district. I want to make sure that we're making the best decision for the entire district. I've lived in Whitman since I was born. I moved to Hanson, big change, but I do feel like I'm invested in this community. I feel like we need to address the entire district, not just your grades. Okay? So I understand 100%, I think it'd be amazing if we could have later start time. My high school in my district starts at 7:15. That is not a big change from what, and I don't agree with it either. They are just as upset, but we have to consider the fact that that's what some big districts also do. I work at a middle school. We start school at 7:50. To have the high school start at eight o'clock at the detriment of the development of middle school students is unfair. It is unfair. So I think that we're saying that middle school students can just be pushed aside because of the needs of this, you know, 14 to 18 year olds, I think is not fair. I think that they should all have that opportunity. If there's more opportunities to look at later start times and still have those opportunities for clubs, for activities after school with the busing to get to, you know, Dennis Yarmo to get to other activities, I, that's the whole child. You have to consider all of that. So I don't think it, I feel like when I heard that, you know, the signings and all of that, it's for all middle grades, it's all adolescents, okay? My child is going to fifth grade at Hanson Middle School next year. He was going to get off the bus under, you know, scenario one at 2:30. Right now, because I work at a middle school, I can get home for him to get off the bus at 3:35 on a good day, on a good day. And it's fine, but I wouldn't be getting home until, you know, an hour after he gets off the bus. So that means I have to find childcare on one family. We do not have the Y program, which we have at the elementary school for before and after school care at the Hanson Middle School. That's my understanding. I have an experience here. Is that correct? Okay. So therefore, now it's up to me. And I understand that, yes, I have children and I do have to pay for them. Yes, I understand that. But I also think that that's something that families need to be aware of. They have to understand that they are going to have like people at home. They're impulsive, little middle schoolers. They're beautiful creatures, they're hilarious, but they're very impulsive. I wanted to also take the time to thank the committee from the students, to talk to the students and see what their perspective are. They're lovely creatures. They also are little people that don't think like adults, can't think like adults with their impulsivity. They also give rise. So I have to get home and get my kids to their activities in the afternoon that start sometimes earlier than we would hope. And you're racing all around and I get that, but I do appreciate you reaching out to them. That means a lot as a parent, that you're caring for them directly. I also have to say, we have to consider that the adults are the ones that are driving the elementary and middle school students. My children do have late practices. 7:00 PM, I have my eight-year-old going to basketball practice, 7:00 PM. I hate it. He goes, she goes until 8:00 PM. My son was just there right now, okay, until 8:00 PM. That is a problem, but that's something we have to address. That's my choice as a parent. That's all I'm saying. So I apologize for taking so much of your time, but I do feel like we have to consider the whole child. We also have to consider the fact that our fifth graders being home in middle, in Hanson, I understand that it might not be an issue for the students in the end, but I just feel like it needs to be consistent. You have to consider everyone's needs. And then the, it was really the negative impact on the students outside of, you know, having them home alone. I respect that my child probably would be fine, but again, they're impulsive creatures. They don't know when to stop or if there's something that bad happens, how quickly they can get help. You know what I'm saying? So having my child in a neighborhood, it's safer maybe than a child that's on like 58 or 27. So again, those are things that we have to consider as a community to make sure that they're safe moving forward with all of these scenarios. So again, middle school guidance counselor, social emotional, it's what I do every day, every single day. It's what I care about, what I'm always going to focus on. But I think it, you need to make sure that we're considering everyone's needs, not just the specific group. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around. Anyone else? Okay.
One real quick, real quick stupid question.
Fire.
What were our start times for all schools before they were changed back in 12?
So, so from what I know, it was the high school was at 7:25. Cindy, where were you at elementary? At Indian Head, 2012, Akacha. You paying attention?
Eleven years ago.
You were at Indian Head, what? All the ele-
I have some.
Eight thirty-ish, right? And the middles were, I think, were quarter off. Middles didn't change.
Middles haven't changed. I don't think they, they were the same time.
So I would ask you, Beth, the middles were about 7:45. High school's at 7:25.
Yeah.
How do they do that though with 15, 20 minutes?
Because we had 10 more buses.
More buses.
There were, there were more, back then, that's why they reduced it and then came up with that. So there were, the cost was about $400,000 more in 2011 to move that around.
Yeah.
Okay. So in terms of the committee, is there anything we're looking to do tonight? I mean, there was a good discussion, but.
No, let's get other people.
Okay.
Not there. They've been sitting through all this.
Hey, I'm trying to move this along, but at the same time, we got to listen, you know, everyone has an opportunity to get. All right. So next is Whitman Middle School presentation. I think that's.
So I have my folks from AI3, just to brief the committee. Couple of weeks ago, you know, my mind's going. The Whitman Building Committee voted unanimously to support the educational plan as presented and the building project plan as presented. Last night, we voted to table, we hold, what's the name?
ESR.
ESR until the 28th. But what's important to this committee is because we voted to change the educational grade alignment from moving Whitman Middle to a six through eight to a five through eight, this committee needs to vote, vote on that because that's a change in the end program. Troy and Julie from AI3 will give you a presentation and try to run through it in less than an hour and a half, right?
It's only two hours.
Yeah, right. We'll cut it down to an hour and a half, please.
Thank you, everybody, for having me here tonight. And also going to thank Superintendent Simonac, Assistant Superintendent Farrow, Principal Ross, Crystal, as well, Crystal Regan, and the working groups for putting in a serious amount of time to get to the state we are right now, which is a final education program for the new five through eight middle school auditorium. And so as Superintendent mentioned, tonight's goal is to go through in very high level the education program, the current status of the project and ultimately vote to move forward with the education program to the MSBA this March 2nd. So we are, you may recall the last time we were in front of you, we had a discussion and also a presentation regarding where we went from the beginning, the first phase of the project, the PDP, preliminary design program, the visioning sessions, how we got to the first draft of the program to the MSBA through that first submission. We're at the end of the second submission and we'll be into schematic design with the preferred option and we'll move through to the summer through schematic design and hitting at the end of the summer, early fall with the, with ten to Tom meeting and ballot vote.
Yes, since we last saw these, have moved from that preliminary program report to the preferred schematic report. And what that means is since the school building committee gave us direction for an option to move forward with the energy style and report that supports that option and the educational program is a major component of that. Along with that, at least the four other components of the report, but I believe that the end and end can I get to really talk to you guys to move that educational program forward as well as the. And then a snapshot of the report itself is about 500 pages. We're continuing to put that together. We have about two weeks until the submission and so that's why this build of the people is a little short.
So quickly through the preferred option itself, as we mentioned, the school building committee voted to move forward with the preferred option of five through eight middle school with an auditorium at approximately 137,000 square feet and an approximate cost at this point in the process of the total project cost of 127,500,000 dollars. Now the preferred schematic and how it aligns with the education program. So as we spoke about the visioning process early on, where the district had a lot of constituents, the middle schoolers, six through eight and the fifth graders, as well as the faculty staff administration, and our group, the design team, identified several key areas that should be incorporated within the design program. Flexibility, adaptability, environments to support collaboration, academic neighborhoods by grade level, integrated special education in general learning areas, neighborhoods and academic neighborhoods that are paired, interdisciplinary instruction with hands-on project-based learning, open collaboration spaces within the central academic learning neighborhood, teacher collaboration and planning spaces, strong connections to the outdoors, an organization that promotes community use, strong indoor-outdoor connections with outdoor classrooms, related arts wing, campus oversight, positioning of the new building, a main street, student commons, innovation hub, an auditorium, views to the exterior in really nice natural daylighting, a compact footprint, access to the outdoors, regulation fields, and band and music areas with after-hours use. Just a handful of components that are blended within the overall educational program. Now with the overall site plan, this, it looks, it looks final, it looks very developed, but we can tell you that there are a significant number of conversations that will occur over the next year. And this is just generally speaking, the positioning of the building, you can see on the plan, the conceptual design is a place behind the existing building. The drive coming in separates vehicular and bus activity and pathways, distributed parking. It reuses or it incorporates new fields and restructures the fields. It has a, outdoor plazas, identifies the town and the soccer field and the four baseball softball fields, among many other items and components within the, within the.
We've also included just the three, four plans of our current business concept and that is, your job is to approve the education program. Remember that our job is to make sure that we're fulfilling all of the goals of that program within the active academic building. So what we're showing here are some precedent and leaders of other projects. These aren't really impossible to divine ideas to achieve that we're describing in the program. Outdoor learning spaces, as Troy mentioned, having this connection to the signature and daylight and a clear display and transparency and using those spaces to let students know what their peers are working on. It has collaboration areas, areas just sort of outside of classrooms that students can work in small groups. All of these things are important components from what we've heard in all of the bidding and conversations with students. And so we're just working on making sure that we can live up to sort of all of those things that are described in our faculty staff and educator fantasy. We've also just included sort of an overall view of what the form right now of the building is, which is a pocketing, sure that we're incorporating a lot of sustainable life there. That's also part of that program and being able to expect that to the education, to have the students be part of that and just following that as a sort of like psychologically conscious handle.
So Superintendent Simonac mentioned you have two votes. The first vote is to approve the final educational program narrative and include the documents as part of the feasibility study, preferred schematic report to the MSBA for consideration. The second is, which is part of the education program narrative, is to endorse the five day configuration for the proposed new Whitman Middle School.
Okay. Questions, questions from the committee before we get into the actual motion. Steve?
Yeah, I don't know, but this is really a question for here or not, but I like, I really like this. I mean, everything that's in here, even in the short time having this document. That is set in a place, obviously to make the current building usable and we just swap out and then demolish and so on and so forth. I know that field has been, not a thing of controversy, but. I know that field has been, not a thing of controversy, but even way back, it had wetlands, and I saw the wetlands on another part that are further back. And I know they did a lot to, Chris Powell, definitely headed up the committee at the time, to mitigate what they could and so forth, so to use it as a football field. So, I guess it's kind of truthful. Does it still fall under that sort of, I mean, wetlands haven't crept back into there? Or, and I'm no scientist, I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but also, is it not only promulgating for a school? Is it too close to the woods? Because obviously, we all worry about Lyme disease, ticks, and this and that. Oh, just give me your overall experience.
Sure.
What do you feel and think and know about this? Fred probably knows it all.
We've heard it, yeah. The two of us know it.
A couple of questions. We have, as part of our consultant team, we have soil engineers, we have geotechnical engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers, that all study specifically the exact conditions that we're facing out in the field area. Now, it is wet. That doesn't mean that the subsurface conditions are not applicable for a new building. In fact, it's really good conditions for a new building. We will need to, as a consulting team, take the necessary precautions that we would in any project to address the foundations, the soils, the subsurface conditions, the under drainage of the slab, the perimeter drainage of the foundation wall, and make sure that the building, the surrounding area, the fields, are all appropriately addressed. And its relationship to the surrounding wetlands, the fields, is actually a really good opportunity with that, the conditions and the educational opportunity with some wetlands in the area. But yes, all of that is part of the initial study and will continue to be studied throughout the process as we continue the design and the sort of the science behind the structural and subsurface conditions that we have.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question. Do you know how the parking spaces are there? Do you know that? Just with all these fields and as it is now, sometimes it's wet to soccer games and...
Yeah, there is. There's two, there's 159 spaces and we're closing 180.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's actually, as you probably recognize, with the field locations and the parking distribution, right now, with the locations of the field, the final building, no parking, having to go around the building.
Yes.
It's really not an ideal layout.
No, not at all.
And so, the distribution, yeah, the distribution of parking, the location of the building, the new building behind the existing building, ultimately will create an ideal campus, because you have a clear sightline across the campus, a clear sightline from the entrance to the building, across the fields to the new building, and then vice versa from the building across. It really sets up from many different levels.
Okay, that's great.
An ideal...
And that's very important, actually, so glad to have you.
Fred, and then Chris?
And one thing I'd like to add is there are plans at the appropriate time, or what I think we said at the end of March, to get the stakeholders for the fields, you know, in conjunction with the building committee, so that everyone can be on the same page as to what's being done, what fields are being replicated, and what opportunities there might be. So, between baseball, softball, Special Olympics, as well as soccer.
Good.
You know, everyone will have an opportunity to come sit and, you know, everyone will be on the same page, because we want it to be a truly community project.
That's great.
And as far as the wetlands, there's even an idea to daylight a stream that was filled in at one point over the years. Daylight that and be able to have our teachers, be able to teach our kids just right outside.
Wow.
You know, for the bioenvironment.
Quickly, I remember you guys mentioned one time, setting the school further back allows for a longer queue of the cars, and that's something I know has been problematic up there as well. So, that certainly would be a benefit.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And we're still leaving enough space for a new emergency vehicle to pass us around.
Perfect.
Hillary?
I don't know if this was, Fred, what you meant, but my question, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for the building committee, or if it's to be determined later, but what is gonna happen when? Because I would imagine that you're gonna have to shut down. So, if the new building is being built where those soccer fields are in the back, and in the front currently, there's only one field.
There's two.
Is there, right, is there a plan?
Not yet.
Yeah, that's right. So, is that part of what you were saying?
Yeah, part of everyone getting together, putting their heads together. I don't know if we utilize some of the lower fields at Town Park.
Yeah, yeah.
The baseball fields there, you know, etc., but that's what everyone wants to sit down.
Up here.
You know, should the project go through, God willing.
Yeah, then you leave that plan.
We have approval next fall.
Okay.
So, the plan would be not only for the future use of the fields, but then interim use?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, because on Saturdays in the fall, I mean, Saturdays and in the spring and fall, yeah.
Yeah, we'd come into Hanson Fields, too.
Well, the problem is so many of the sporting programs are combined, then there probably aren't enough fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Steve?
I had to go back. The superintendent has signed off on the bus path. I'm gonna wake up in the middle of the night about buses.
You mean, like, is it like a mile and a half long?
We're at the very early stages of the site plan and building development. In fact, we're just starting schematic design. During schematic design, there will be a lot of discussion about the paths to path and distribution of parking, the vehicular versus pedestrian, walker versus bus, and how that's eliminated on site, the fields and the phasing. There's a lot of, this is a pretty picture.
Well, it's like your new house. You wanna, you know, you already move in before the Israeli guard. I just have one more thing. If Mr. Small can include a street hockey ring that we had in the 70s.
Now you're talking.
I can take on Team Scripps.
Yeah, I'd be into that. I find my own bowling ball.
George is on my team.
Okay.
Pretty good defense.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah, make sure you got his exact or whatever it was.
Okay. The motion would be that the school committee votes to approve the final education program narrative and include it in the PSR as part of the preferred schematic report that is going to be sent to the MSBA, as well as vote to endorse the 5-8 grade configuration at the proposed new Whitman Middle School that is incorporated within that educational plan.
And can we, and can we, and authorize?
And authorize the chair and the superintendent to sign off on that when they're inserting to the PSR.
She's gonna have to watch the video. All right, so we got, who did I have the second? Glenn or David?
Dave can have it.
David, great, wonderful, thank you. Any other discussion, or any discussion, sorry? Is it, so, other than these two votes, are there any other votes the school committee will take on the project? Or is this it? Okay, great.
Welcome back.
Yeah, no, with updates, I just meant from voting. Yes, we'd love to have you.
Funding.
Wonderful, it's a wonderful project, yeah, okay.
It really is.
All right, well, moves to vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, great. Is there another one, Fred, or was it? Could you wrap it into one?
We incorporated both.
Perfect, thank you, Fred.
Thank you. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you for waiting for this. It's a long wait for you.
Yes, sorry. All right, so just as a time check, we're at 9:05, two hours, two and a half hours into this. We have a number of items we still need to go through. We're good, kind of trudging on, or are we gonna get to a point where? So, we did, yeah, we can do a five, we can do a five-minute recess. You have to leave.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have to leave?
I got one.
Oh, I do.
So, can we, can we go until, how late can folks go?
I walked out of here after midnight before.
I know.
Oh, you poor thing.
9:30. Okay, how about we'll...
Negotiation when you guys...
So, let's press on if everyone's good for it, and we will stop tonight at 9:30. And we'll probably now need to definitely meet on March 1st, which wasn't necessarily a scheduled meeting, but it will be a scheduled meeting now.
Sure.
March 1st.
So, relatively, hopefully relatively briefly, but just, so Hanson Middle School, as we all know, had some issues with some water the day of the polar plunge.
Yeah.
And school had to be canceled on the 6th, that Monday. By rule, I have to make that day up for the Hanson Middle School students only, which would push them one day later in the school year, or potentially, I've been asked by some faculty members and some parents to see if the students, if the committee would allow students to go on Good Friday, which is April 7th, as a half-day. We, in the past, we have a little bit of a history here. At one point, we had to call Conley off because they had a neurovirus outbreak. That happened in March. We did not use Good Friday, because Good Friday was the Friday of April vacation, in April vacation. So, Easter was on that Sunday during vacation. This is an opportunity, again, talking to some of the teachers. School's gonna be tough for the Hanson Middle School students the day after everybody else in the district is gone in the summer. They will probably have more educational opportunities on Good Friday. Having the school committee offer that out as a modification. We have to make up the day. There's nothing I can't get around it. So, it's either the end of school or the proposal of Good Friday. So, I wanted to bring it to the committee ASAP, so I could let parents know ASAP what the decision was.
I'd be willing to make a motion that we use that Good Friday.
Can I ask a question first? Hold on.
As a makeup day for the Hanson Middle School.
Great. Yes, discussion.
Could we do that and say they're gonna go to school on Thanksgiving?
Could we?
What?
Federal holiday. We have that, do we have that power?
Yes.
I'm just saying there's a lot of religious families that...
So, they could opt out of going to school.
They could do that.
Absolutely.
It's a half a day, I'm sorry.
We would, I would make that a half a day.
Okay. My, oh, sorry, no, you go. I just want to let you know, I got some feedback from my daughter and her friends, and they're all for it. Because they don't wanna...
They don't wanna go.
They don't wanna go because the older siblings and all that, they're happy to go. They don't wanna go.
I have no problem with it. We have the flexibility around that.
I just didn't...
It's not a state holiday.
Okay.
It's a recognized day.
Not a state holiday.
In a lot of schools across the state.
Okay, hold on, all right.
Can I just add on to my, well, it's okay with the union. I mean, I don't know if we can...
Well, hang on, yep. I think he said he already had conversations up, so I'm sure he wouldn't be bringing up that he had not had the conversation.
I just want to make sure attendance policy at the middle school, and then if families are keeping their children out for religious reasons, like, that that's, you know, that that's clear and okay. There might also just be kids who don't go, like, you know what I mean? But that piece of it, I think, is really important, because I think other districts have gotten into trouble where they've had school, because it is one of those floating holidays, with snow days and stuff. So, just making that, that if there are families who, you know, they have the right to keep their children home on that religious...
It's just like in September.
Yes.
The Jewish holiday.
Yep.
Do a different holiday. We are in session, and students and staff take that day off.
Okay.
So, anyone else?
Wouldn't it just be like, parents have the right to keep their children any other day in the week?
But a religious holiday, that it would be an excused absence for the students.
Yes.
And so, that, I think, I guess, I didn't clarify, I'm sorry. That is the important, an excuse, and I don't know what an attendance policy is at the middle school. I know at a high school. At a high school, it's different. It makes a really big difference. So, that would be something that's really important, that that's communicated.
That's all. Okay. Let's go Donovan and Cindy.
Will we have staff on that day? I'm wondering how many staff may recognize it and if there will be a substitution.
Based on what I've heard from Ms. McGann.
Perfect, segue.
You know, Ms. McGann was the staff member that brought this forward, and that the staff would be there to be with the students.
Yeah, so, I do not speak for everybody at school, but the educated point of view was that we have more children in attendance on that day. More effective learning, it's before end of class. Last day of school, after the last day of school, no, we're in online.
I don't dispute the day, I just want to make sure we have staff there.
The association told, though, was that if any of the staff at school had to excuse themselves for religious reasons. We talked with Jeff on that already, that that would be fine, but the majority, kind of informal, hope is that staff will be there ready to go.
And just on that side, that's a day that if I'm in, or George is in, or whatever, we have to go down there for a little bit to help out. We can't, because really, there's nothing, there's nobody else in district. So, it's an opportunity. If something came, push, shove, if there was a massive exodus, we would take care of it. And I believe Cindy that.
Sorry, I know it's gonna be business as usual, we're gonna pick up where we left off.
Nobody's gonna mess with Cindy, so.
Any other discussion? The only quick point I'd like to add is, I think this is a good idea, and as things happen in the future, this is a good thing for us to consider for any school, so. All right, well, moves to vote. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Anyone against?
I'm...
Abstaining?
Just, I didn't catch that conversation, so I...
You want to abstain?
That's what I'm saying, please.
Abstain?
That's it.
All right, no problem. That makes sense, yes.
I'm coming to be in your classic...
Yeah, sure. It's gonna be history, US history.
Where do you want to go next? We don't have to take things in order.
So, I'm just gonna go with the, for a vote, just in case people have to leave. Number seven, the MOU with police departments as a policy. So, I ran this by the policy subcommittee. When I was looking through our policies around substance abuse, I ran across our MOU policy, which is KLG slash E, or, that hasn't been updated since 2014. That's our MOU with the police departments. You folks all approved the MOU in September. I'm asking you folks to vote this as policy, to make sure our policy manual is up to date. Nothing changed since September. The fact is, nobody's updated since 2014. The former police chief's now since gone, we're the last ones in that policy. Policy subcommittee approved this to move forward to you folks. I'm just looking for a vote.
Motion to update as presented.
I think David already had the second. That was a quick second. The second was almost, the second, the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, one down.
So, hopefully relatively quickly, I sent in the packet an update of my goals so far. Strategic plan development, social-emotional learning, safe and secure schools, and in the start times, which we had a lengthy conversation about. The social-emotional learning, or the strategic plan, we're involved. We have a plan in place with the committee. Will be updated as we get to the end of the school year. Hopefully, that will be voted in as our new strategic plan. The social-emotional piece, a survey actually went out to all students, elementary, middle, and high. The subgroup that we have on social-emotional learning had a brief look at, kind of gave some feedback to Nikki to put it out. The parent survey is going out on Friday for parents to get feedback on where our kids are at. The safe and secure schools piece is referenced right there. I'll take questions, and again, it's start times. I just, I'd like to go in more detail, but I'm also looking at the clock a little.
I just have a question about the surveys.
Yep.
This survey here, just because parents asked, because Dr. Jocelyn had sent out an email saying your kids are gonna be taking a survey, and then I got emails and texts. What is this survey?
Yes.
And I thought it had to do with the strategic plan? Is that correct? Or is this something, is this MTSS?
It's MTSS.
Okay.
It's MTSS.
And this is the survey the kids took?
Correct.
Okay. All grades? Like, when it says elementary?
Elementary goes to elementary students.
So, kindergartners?
Yes.
Okay.
The middle goes to middle and high school goes to high.
So, just to piggyback on that, maybe, because I got a similar message for middle school, maybe just a touch more on what it is.
Yeah, well, because I think, I think they're afraid that it's the drug survey.
Right.
And...
Right, we do a lot of surveys.
And, yeah.
It's a simple takeaway, right? Next time we send out the survey, just a little more color what it is.
Okay. So, just an update, it doesn't, this doesn't have to be, I just wanted to update you as we go forward. The evaluation piece will be the first we could do for the May meeting, depending on where it goes. Okay? MOU and budget. So, a little bit out of order, I'd like John to come up and just give updates on where we are, because there was a change in some of the financials, as we worked on last week. Making sure line items were correct. Staff made sure we have an accurate count of where our people are, and I'd like John to, and he sent the documents out to speak to that.
Good, thank you. Trying to move quickly. I sent out a budget change sheet. Did you get a copy?
Updated budget docs?
Well, I updated all the budget documents, the changes that have happened since February 1st. I'm out, and I have a sheet, but don't have it down in my...
We got a lot of paper in front of us right now.
Does it have a number?
No, it's just...
Keep prepared.
I'm trying to distill down, all the changes were from the last two weeks. In general, the budget that I sent out, it's 24, $276,000, or 2.98% of the... union is, we're looking to try and get the updated sheets for all documents. But in general, there were 14 corrections, three reclassifications, five additions, five reductions. I can pull them if you want, but mostly just going through and kind of making sure exact amount for every single person. Just over the correction one quickly. I had a placeholder in for everyone that has their own contract, because there's a lot of people that have, if they have their own contract. I was able, between February 1st and now, to go in and actually look at every single person's contract and look at the exact amount. So that, the top, the top sheet, 1 to 14, that's a $14,009 reduction from what it was on February 1st. Some budget additions, I put a reason for each one of them, just some things where I mixed up people's last names, I put them in the wrong spot. And then the big one was Massachusetts, the health team, I have a 3% increase in there. Right now, they're talking about a 4.5% increase to the health insurance, fiscal year 24, but they're talking about a zero, they haven't voted yet, they're going to vote next month, a zero to the dental. So here, I put in a 4.25% increase to that budget line to cover that. And then the bottom, the budget reductions, we had some double counts, we had some corrections. The two bottom ones are the updates to the transportation costs that we were talking about earlier, the way the numbers changed, the actual amounts for transportation directly, I'll put them in. And, and the pay, I'm trying to work out, play along. So in general, it's down to 276,000, 68,000, 27,000 corrections.
Document two reflects that? Document two...
A new wave of things that go up, which are 250, as the front page.
Yep, I get it.
So just to highlight, to, with those... You okay?
No, I'm trying to move quickly.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say, so just, again, going through this again, making sure everything's correct in the right spot, making sure, again, when we, when we did the budget and we spoke about this to the budget subcommittee, John pulled payroll, because all our documents were lost from last year. So there were some errors, and we looked at this, looked at this again, we're going to go through it, and I need my third set of eyes, which is Mr. Farrell, to look through and make sure that we have everybody in the right spot. But with those reductions right now, the overall budget percentage increase is 2.9%. And the assessments both went down as well in this. And we'll continue to work through and make sure it's as, as perfect as possible. Again, going to John, the governor's budget is supposed to come out on the 1st. The budget subcommittee is meeting that Friday, hopefully, the 28, the, the 3rd, to review some of those numbers, because this, there is going to be another reiteration of all these numbers after that, because the governor's numbers aren't necessarily in. So just letting the committee know that. We're still going to work hard until we have to vote the assessment on the 15th.
So, I don't want to bury the lead there. Did you just say, based upon these updates, it reduces the overall budget increase?
Yes.
Okay. So when are you going to be at a place where you're, where you're collectively confident in the numbers? Because we're seeing some pretty healthy swings.
March 8.
March 8.
March 8.
Pretty confident.
Every document will change, so if we get the numbers correct, much...
March 8, and then, you know, yes. This was, this is, again, going through, and, and when John was saying, he doubled counted a, a sped person, and we had two names, again, going off payroll that were incorrect. So I want to make sure that it's a, it's a process, and these documents, over the years, have changed as well as we go through, so.
Questions, comments?
Thanks. You can hang there if you, but, so, questions so far have come in, and I've dropped all the questions I've had from, from finance committee and school committee into the, into the drive. Continue to send me those questions. And again, I think on the 8th of March, and we could talk about it on the 1st again, because we're going to have a meeting, but the 8th of March is when we'll really know governor's budget numbers and what the real numbers are like. So continue to send us those questions, we'll, we'll get them back to committee members, finance committee members, and then, and then open that up for discussion. So I appreciate the questions, hopefully. It takes us a couple hours sometimes, or multiple hours, to, to research and make sure we have the, the data. I want to keep reiterating, and Mr. Goodett was going to talk tonight, we canceled him for exec session, we sent him home. But the data breach and what we lost in Munis is, it's hard to comprehend and try to make up. So John's doing it the best he can.
Just in going into, and seeing some of the questions, I know there are some things that we've lost. In other words, like what certain things have cost us, et cetera. Have we been able to reach out to the vendors and get a year-end statement? Like, I noticed one thing was for ice and salt and tools and electrical supplies under facilities. I would think that we could replicate the invoices somehow, or we would have the paper backup from the warrants that were signed. But if, you know, I forget the name of the company, there was something in there about, what is this for cleaning supplies? I think we generally order everything from one company. Can we just get a year-to-date accounting from them for whatever fiscal year that we're speaking of, you know, from last year, so that we know, you know, what we're anticipating from what we spent? So that we, you know, that might be a way of building back some of the information. Let's take it to that.
Give it a shot. I just, I again, want to be mindful of, I've got one business, there's no assistance to John right now, and, and it's challenging for, for the amount of, his end-of-year report is due, E and D has to be certified by a certain time, so this is challenging. So we'll, we can, keep asking the questions, and we'll do the best we can. All right, that's all I can ask for. Go on, ask questions.
Yep, real quick, on document 26, the last page, I don't know if this is a correction or an add, Jeff, because the first one had a total of 492, and this new iteration has 501 total staff, so it might have been counting, but it looks like the largest change is high school special ed Paris, add is 11 in a column that was zero. I know that doesn't net up the difference, but that was the biggest swing. Do you know...
I, I don't know right off the top of my head, so let me find that out.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure if you see this document or where it came from.
So I agree, and I'm just counting, and there's no other way to do it, I'm just counting down on the spreadsheet. We did it.
Just based on some classification, so, I just saw a change. I'm just making sure if someone else is looking at this, like, oh, you added 11 Paris to the high school, that it might have just been getting the numbers right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Rather than adding.
Yes.
I lost my...
If, if we're moving people from one area of the budget to another, like perhaps last year they were Essar, or another building, or some, is there a way that we can have one sheet that says FY 23, FY 24, where the position was, and where it's gone to? In other words, you know, we're backfilling from Essar, you know, now putting it into the operating, just seeing everything side by side with what they, what the titles are? Was there a position that wasn't there the prior year, that's now there? And, you know, where did that come from, so to speak? You know what I'm saying? That's where I find myself at times reading the budget. You know, you see there was nothing in the prior year, and it looks like, okay, we're just adding it, and I can see what you're saying, and all of a sudden, boom, so many positions. But they must have come from somewhere, because I don't think we've hired people, so to speak. So was it laterals? Was it in a different part of a budget? Was it paid for by grant, and now it's not? You know, trying to just understand and comprehend.
I only have one document, and it's the first iteration of the FY 23 budget, by name and by account. That's all we have, don't have anything else.
So Fred, the, right, I think the challenge, because this came up in budget subcommittee, I think we had a very similar conversation, is it's trying to recreate the past. So it's, like, you can get the present, and now it's trying to use the compare. So that might be, what I'm hearing was like the 501 that's on this last sheet, it's not, it's 501 for next year, it's 501 for this year too. So it's cleaning up the data, which is the problem with this whole thing, which makes our job pretty tough to help validate things when...
I'm just, I'm lost. Totally, totally lost with the different numbers. You already see zero, and then, you know, 300,000. It's like, okay, well, I know we're not adding 300,000, where did it come from?
Sorry, who was next? Was it Michelle? Michelle?
I'm just looking at the budget questions. And question number five, it talks about there's no salary for the, some of the libraries. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, it says that Whitman Middle School Library has an assistant paid through a Title I grant, but the Hanson Middle School Library does not have a dedicated librarian. How, how would you classify Ms. Story?
She teaches city.
She teaches city, that's...
She's a teacher.
Oh, so she's a permanent teacher?
Yes.
So she's not in any Essar, anything like that? So she's never going to switch over? Oh.
She, we, the librarian piece was, was removed years ago, and she teaches city, so she teaches a full classroom level.
Ah, okay, that's good to know, because I...
So there are no librarians, there, there are no librarians in district, except for here at the high school.
Got it.
They're all covered by Paris. Whitman is covered by the Title I person.
Okay.
What, what Ms. Story will do, will check out books.
Okay.
But she's not the librarian.
And hopefully, she'll be teaching STEM next year.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, yes, correct.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but like, this is so complex, right? And like, to your point, so we're going to meet March 1st, we're going to meet March 8th, and then from March 8, from March 1st, the governor's budget allegedly comes out, right?
March 1st.
Is that a definite?
So I think, so I think, I think what we kind of all talked about, well, sorry, what was discussed in budget subcommittee was, March 1st school committee meeting is probably not going to focus on budget, because the numbers are literally going to be coming out in pieces that afternoon. So there'll be no point to try and...
Okay.
Catch up with what's going on. That'll be the March 8th meeting.
Right, and then we have a week to wrap our brain around it, and then come back on March 15th and vote, and like, I don't, like...
We have, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about like the time crunch, and I understand that we have to work backwards from town meetings, right? And March 15th is, has, we have to certify a budget on that day, right? But as I was trying to decipher through some of the documents today, like, I checked my stuff at 3 o'clock, and there were things, and then I came in here and there were more things, right? And, and, and I know it is so much work, and I, like, what you're doing is awesome, because it makes me understand things, and I am not a math person, or a numbers person, or anything like that. So it's great and awesome, but my concern is that, like, what is our expectation on the timeliness of us receiving information to be able to make an informed budget vote, or have an informed budget conversation? That's my concern. And because it takes me a little bit longer to go through the stuff, you know, so like, I, I don't know that there's a solution, but maybe just a comment to, you know, I mean, I don't know.
Sure. Sorry, just after you finished, I'm just...
Oh, I think she's done. You have to answer her question now.
No, I think through you to the chair, I'm sorry to Hillary, I think the question you're probably looking to the answer is, what would the impact of the governor's budget be to us, maybe, right? Like, how could that change? And so I think it serves the purpose to talk about, you know, chapter 70, you know, it's not going to change, as far as we're concerned, that per pupil is nominal, 100,000, 200,000, which you've probably factored in, and the other variables is how they'll fund reimbursement regionally. So we know we're anticipating that, but what would that swing be, if there was to be one? And circuit breaker, and school choice, we, you know, that revenue, and charter school. So, but we, we have an idea of, of the tolerance, and I'll leave it to John to comment on, on what that means. But that's probably what you're thinking, like, how big is the variable we may get hit with?
Right. Yeah.
What else has come on is the requirement of contribution for pounds, and that's a substantial, could be a substantial change, one way or another, depending on what comes out. Also, the student count, which determines the student name, I really keep...
And as far as, I mean, even regional transportation of per pupil, you're 100% right. We'll know what the governor says, which is Student Opportunity Act, that, will we at 40 or 60, or something like that?
No.
Okay. I know there's, there'll be amendments with the Senate version, with the House version, you know, to raise it to 100. Those are already being spoken apart. Who knows? We won't know till next June or July, you know, for that stuff, but we base everything off of the governor's. I wouldn't anticipate any craziness, other than require local contributions and, you know, things of that nature. Even reimbursement for regional, you won't see until it comes out of conference committee where it ends up.
Okay, we okay to move on?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I think there might only be one more item, but I definitely want to kind of unstick this one. So we're at a little bit of an impasse on this one, so I just kind of wanted to get the, the way into the committee. So Don had brought to, I'm going to go super high level, and then, because I think we can just kind of hash it out. So Don had brought to the budget subcommittee a couple times the concept of, hey, let's have a very, a line detail of every employee in the district's salary position. We had talked about it in budget subcommittee a couple times, and we came up with more cons than pros. It actually, I think, what we actually came up with was, the result of this document, this last page, was, hey, maybe this makes more sense, just because of the cultural implications, and some other things, that we just didn't feel like it was going to help us get to where we wanted to go. At the same time, Don has reached out to the superintendent, asking for that, so we're kind of now at, I'm now putting this at the purview, what is the will of the committee? Because I think we need to make sure that we're clear if we're going to create something or do something that's going to require time and effort, that, again, is supported by the will of the committee. So that's kind of where we're at, but, yes.
If I may, since my name is on the agenda?
Yeah.
Comment. So I have prepared some comments in relation to this agenda item. First, I will say for the record, I did not ask for my name to be put on the agenda. I will say that our district policy on fiscal management states, in developing a budget, care shall be taken to make the documents associated with the budget clear and understandable to finance committees of member communities and to the general public. In January, I did email the superintendent, a link to the Hanover Schools' public budget document provides a list of all staff positions, building assignments, annual salary, and funding sources, which speaks to what you were just talking about, Fred, salary position. It was my comment at that time in the email, that transparency in the FY 24 budget is of utmost importance. At the request of the budget subcommittee chair, David Forth, I forwarded that email to the budget subcommittee in the spirit of transparency, as they were preparing presentation. When I waited and the February 1st presentation lacked this detail, I followed up with administration, to which the reply was superintendent would have the request to me by the end of the day tomorrow, which would have been February 7th. I then heard from Chair Howard that a member of the committee does not have the authority to unilaterally direct the administration. Ironically, a member of this committee just unilaterally obstructed access to public records to ascertain. My question was simply where the money is being spent in our budget. I did submit on February 8th a Freedom of Information Act because it's public record to the district. The details have yet to be provided to this committee or myself. The administration has the salary totals and should provide the context behind how they arrived at those totals. Budget policy itself gives a directive to provide a budget that is clear and understandable. Information retrieval in order to accomplish this is not a directive to the superintendent. In my professional background, this is standard accounting procedure to reconcile totals to the detailed data. I have consulted with our field rep, Jim Hardy, at Mass Association of School Committees. He stated this is not a matter for the committee to decide or even respond to. In fact, he described the action of putting my name on the agenda as being, quote, "a bit harsh." The information is public, it exists, and the district has to provide it. I would ask when the last time is that this committee took up a public records request during a meeting or even named a person on the agenda who's making a public records request? With the chair to place my name on the agenda gives the appearance of opposition to transparency, obstruction to access to public records and delay tactics to providing it in a timely manner. So I ask what the purpose of this effort is tonight.
OK, well.
An attempt to discourage citizens from running for elected office by treating those who want transparency an attempt at humiliation or embarrassment. I'm far from humiliated. I will not waver from my advocacy for educational equity and proper school finance. Please, I would, I would ask that. This budget is not too large. The total amount is reasonable, so please, no one should misrepresent any words I'm saying. What I'm asking for is to be sure our spending is impactful and equitable to all students. So I will close with this email that I have from March 2022, a year ago. It was sent to Mr. Howard, Simon Ak, Mr. Stamberg and Mr. Farrell, requested FY22 district employees' names and titles and salary. It was emailed to me five days later without question and without hesitation. So I asked why it was insisted to bring it to the committee this year, today, when it was not last year.
OK, so we'll go through.
I have to.
Yeah, and we'll go through the long version then if that's what we want to do. So the Budget Subcommittee discussed this in detail a couple of months ago. I don't have the minutes yet because they haven't been produced. The Subcommittee did not see the need, but was not entirely clear behind the request. So at that point, there was a request made back to clarify, I can't remember if it was through the superintendent or David, to clarify what, what is the intent of the request. We did receive an email with the Hanover budget. The Budget Subcommittee discussed the context and understanding of the salary data, right? So we were really trying to understand how this would help us. The superintendent shared that the business manager was also presently very tight on time and we also talked about if maybe necessary, having a working group to look at equity. My understanding is Don reached out directly to the superintendent via phone and asked for the same information after the Budget Subcommittee discussed it for the second time and suggested that if the superintendent did not provide it, that she would make a Freedom of Information Act request. Don sent an email on 2/6 requiring this, requesting this information. Jeff and I subsequently spoke and we had a conversation about, again, given the conversation with the Budget Subcommittee and the fact that there was a member clearly asking for information outside of that. Yeah. Outside of that, that it would make sense to bring this to the full committee and not to do anything at that time. Don did send an email suggesting that there was a question about obstructing a public records information request. I did respond to that information email and I directed her to the district's policy on public information requests because her email was from a school committee member. It was an email that contained a whole bunch of information and then at the end said, by the way, I want a public records information request and I'm CCing the records administration officer. So I did check with council, that is not a public records request. We have a policy as a district on how you should make a public records request. I encouraged her, as any other citizen, to do and make a public records request. The conversation I also had with council was clear that, which they agreed, is that, again, the will of the committee should, should, should kind of direct the administration's efforts. So that's kind of where we are. Again, just, it's whatever the will of the committee is. I think if we have a situation where any committee member feels, and the committee can all opine on this, that the administration should do something or create a report or provide information, that that should really be something that's at the will of the committee. If the committee decides, great. If not, then we don't. So that's kind of where we're at here tonight. So that is the issue. And again, I'm just looking for the opinion of the committee in terms of.
It wasn't the will of the committee a year ago, though. So it's.
I wasn't on there either.
Usually.
Chairman.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I just want to maybe offer my perspective to this as chairman of the Budget Subcommittee as well. We had an agenda item approximately in January to talk about line items and the presentation to that. The superintendent said, you know, a school committee member made that request, but they did not specify who that school committee member was. And the conversation during that meeting was pertaining to the line items and how they would be broken apart in the presentation of that and how that would be, how that would work for transparency, the optics of that, and also the time that Mr. Stamberg has available to him. My opinion after the fact was I wanted to get more information and try to understand that committee member's perspective more. I did not ask the superintendent or Chair Howard who that school committee member was because in February 2021, Ms. Byers made a similar recommendation when the former chairman was in charge and wanted more transparency pertaining to the line items. So after the joint meeting we had with FinCom, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, I did ask Ms. Byers if she was the one who made that request and specifically requested for her to email me with the example that she was used, in that case, it was Hanover, so then we could have a visual of that and then we could talk about it more in depth. We ended up having a follow-up discussion with it. I believe Don was there and Ms. Otina was there as well. The opinion, my personal takeaway was not that the Budget Subcommittee was going one way or the other, but it just seemed that with the time that we have.
Point of order, the, the meeting that we had where we discussed this, I don't think Ms. Byers or Ms. Otina was at.
Well, the first one.
The second time we discussed this.
So then you're saying three?
We don't, I don't have the minutes. So when I get the minutes, I'll look. But, but I am, I don't think they were at that meeting because, again, I was hoping they would be at that meeting so we could, again, kind of share in the conversation. We just got an email, we talked about it, we went through it. I think it was the last Budget Subcommittee meeting, where we really didn't talk about this, we said we'd talk about it in the school committee. That was the meeting that I think Ms. Otina and Ms. Byers attended.
Well, anyway, so again, my, my.
Sorry, but I just want to make sure we got it right.
My, my takeaway from that was not that it was one of the Subcommittee to make that decision and two, from my understanding of talking with the superintendent and Mr. Stamberg, that they were constrained on time and energy and effort to make these changes in a timely manner. So my recommendation was that maybe this is something we could talk about to the school committee, so then maybe whether it's possible to do this year or implement next year is something we could go and get ready and prepare now for the sake of transparency and understanding the budget. And I want to clarify it, too. At no point, you know, I personally don't like how Ms. Byers was added to the agenda item because I can recall two years ago where I felt unfairly targeted and harassed at times by the former chairman, who would put me on agenda items in his executive session. And I just felt, feel like also today in particular, I feel more envious of the other room and I've seen a couple of remarks that I consider to be condescending to Ms. Byers and I don't think that's appropriate and nothing we should really be doing and we should be respecting each other as committee members. So I guess, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is, is I'm a little disappointed at how this escalated. At the same time, I believe Ms. Byers has made a very fair point and it's something she's consistently asked for since February of 2021, hence how I was able to identify who it was who made that request. Again, you know, I'm not saying one way or the either or the other, but the will of the committee should be on this, but I, I do believe it's a worthwhile discussion for us to talk about how we want to approach our, our presentation and the line items and for the sake of transparency. And I guess one more thing to add before I digress too much is, you know, Mr. Stamberg presented today, I think it was a reduction of what, $276,000 in, in teacher salaries. So, you know, it is worthwhile for us talking about the school committee, our school committee, exactly how we're approaching our line items and the presentation of that to make it easier to understand and also easier for Mr. Stamberg and for committee members to be able to point out if there is any errors, whether it's salary corrections or if there's multiple of that because it has a significant impact to our budget and our presentation and the services that we're trying to add to the community and help our constituents and students and help the parents as well. So I just, I want to add that and, yeah.
Jeff, go ahead.
I just, I, I think, because I think a couple, 2021, is that what you said?
Yeah, I believe February 2021, yeah.
Um, I just want to offer an educator perspective because I don't think that the request is malintentioned at all. I do think there, it could certainly, and this may have been cons that you spoke about in the Budget Subcommittee, but at any time when you put a teacher's name and their salary out for the people to see, because if it's transparency, it'd be a budget document, right? I, when I ran for school committee three years ago, my, my husband's salary was posted all over Facebook, like people.
It's on the town report.
So, so that's what I'm saying.
Hold on, hold on. Let her speak.
So, so that was.
Let her speak.
I was going to.
Talk about condescending.
I was going to get to that. So that, I guess, is the question that I have. It's on the town report. And so the, the, the part about, I think Chair threw you to Don, you said equity for all our students. If you have a school that has a lot of young teachers, their salary line item is going to be less than a school that has tenured teachers who have master's degrees or have been there and have their tenure and things like that. So I, I know I've said this before because this is something, I, I don't, I guess I don't know. I understand what, what the intent is, but I'm not sure what it would solve. I, I don't know if the point is to try to figure out like the email about which teachers are moving over from ESTA to this to ESTA to that, but you can't look at this is how much salaries are at Indian Head and this is how much salaries cost at Duval and say, well, Duval's less, so they must be getting less. That's not how teachers' salaries work. And so that could be problematic if that, to me, because I, I see that happening, right? Like, you know, when you go to hire a teacher, you're like, nope, no one, you know, there are districts that won't hire anybody who's been in three years and has a master's because they cost too much money. So that's problematic. And I think anytime, I know that it's on the town report, but people, it's hard for people to find the town report. Finding a budget document with someone's name and a salary attached to it is really easy to find, really easy to find. And that, to me, like if my district were doing that, I would be, because now, oh, this teacher makes this much, my kid didn't learn anything. I mean, we are opening, and I know, I recognize this on the town report, but I don't think people are reading the town report the way they're looking at our budget documents. So.
Yeah, and again, look, at the end of the day, it's the will of the committee. If the committee thinks that we should do this, it's fine. Right, wrong or indifferent, my point is anytime we're asking the administration to do something, I can't speak for what others have done. I think I've been very consistent. I think we've had some challenges where, like, remember specifically Fred wanted something? I said, what's the will of the committee? And we did. And it is what it is. It's just, it's not, it's not about the request itself. It's if we're going to create something that requires some effort, and we did discuss it twice at Budget Subcommittee, and at both times, we agreed we weren't going to move it forward. To me, it's just a simple, it should come to the will of the committee. It shouldn't be a situation where, you know, it, that, that just gets sidestepped. So right, wrong or different, that was the intent of having this conversation. Steve.
Yeah, I, I really enjoy Budget Subcommittee. Maybe it was because I've been on this for so long and I also do it with the community collaborative. And all of our conversations with it, when Chris was our chair, Dave now is our chair, it's just so robust in my eyes and meaningful. And it's like, John and Jeff, can you do this? Can you pull this together? Can we do this? We were mentioning earlier, or at least I was and was in a whole different conversation about, well, what the, what would the delta differences be? And I don't know, because of a lot of line items that had to be taken out, I think about Mrs. Otina's email as well and reading through it, maybe that gives us some gravity and a place to say, OK, yeah, what was the one? Was the Title Grant, is it getting down to the ESTA 2 and 3? And are those moved over? Is the increase in guidance because of X? And those are the deltas that come out of it and give us the full array of what the budget comprises of. And I know with these changes, it's been absolutely tough on everyone. I mean, John puts together 28 documents or 26 official documents here, and that's just one meeting. So for all of us to kind of take this in and comprehend it, you know, can be a lot.
Definitely a lot. Yeah.
Two things, one, and I was going to bring up it's published in Hanson, all that information. Is it possible to provide the information, just not list people's names? You know, their clock number or an ID, you know, or assign, you know, random numbers or something.
Can I just say that it's not published in Whitman?
No, I know it's not published in Whitman. Hanson does, I don't know.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
But my pay grade.
One, one side of town doesn't, when we talk about equity, too.
But, you know, I could see the, I could see having that report and trying to be able to understand certain things. I could even see that report being a year over, year over, year, you know, and trying to have a historical so you can see what's going on in schools and where someone came in and things of that nature. So I could see the validity of the reports. Just wondering if it could be done with anonymous names. I don't care who's who, per se. You just care about trying to understand the whole thought process. That would be my thought.
Yeah, one of the things we, we covered in Budget Subcommittee was, hey, maybe we even have a working group on the school committee, look at the data. So it's not, you know, we can get to the same, there's folks here that could perhaps do the analysis, but there's still, you know, that cultural impact. I had David and then Don, I think.
Yeah, so Hillary actually reminded me of this.
I was before both of you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't even see that. But I'll come right back to you.
Hillary reminded me of this, of when she was talking about the line items and the concern about having, you know, the staff member's name with the salary attached to it. What we talked about during Budget Subcommittee, too, not necessarily particularly pertaining to that, but, you know, contextualizing the data because you see numbers, but what does it mean and how does it relate to what's been going on in the district? Because there's also, you know, the impact of, of the services since, again, let's say since 2008, the impact the district has had regarding the opioid epidemic, COVID, the recession, the, the changes to our other services that we've lost and added over the years. And I think it's, oh, God, I didn't know.
No, no, sorry. I'm trying to keep, he's raising his hand.
And I guess it's just important for us to understand not just fiscal year by fiscal year, but also in the grand scheme of things, and the long-term impact it's had on us as a district. For an example I think of in my head is full daycare and our lack of inaction towards full daycare, which has led to where we were at in 2022, 2023. Go on, before I forgot, there was another thing I was looking.
Yeah, bring it back, bring it back.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and I just want to add, again, back to the whole entire point and, and I, it's a very valid request, in my opinion, that, that Ms. Byers had. And I just want to add that I, you know, sometimes I feel like, you know, something like this way it's presented, it's almost as if Ms. Byers made like a vanity request. And that's not what this is at all. And where she's coming from, from her profession, too, who's an accountant, it's a very valid request and, and, you know, I want to add, oh, one last thing, too, in terms of meeting minutes, too. You know, I know Steve's working on that and, and the superintendent has the recordings of verbatim of what we say word for word that will be sent over to him to finish, but also I think it's important if there's any committee members who, who want to hear that actual discussion word for word, it could be sent over to them. I don't see any issue with that. And Steve, he's going to get those meeting minutes done, right? All right, thank you.
Don and then, is that all right? Or Glenn, Glenn?
Yeah, sure. I, I totally, I understand the idea of having the line item, the more data we have, the more information we have, the better decision we can make. I don't see any benefit in having their names. I don't, is there any way that their names helps us make a better decision? And that these names would be published? So if there's any way around doing that, I, I like the idea of getting more data, but I don't like the idea of publishing their names.
Thank you, Glenn, because my first request, and I will individually email you the link to the Hanover FY22, and it does not include a single staff name. It says grade one teacher, grade one teacher, grade one, and by building and building. And that was my first request. That's all I ask for, for transparency. We need equity in this district. We need to be watching where the money is spent. So that's what I need to let you all know.
Chris, and then we got, and then we're getting a line over there. And I would say if we're going to have public discussion on this, we probably need a motion, but, OK.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand, Don had made a, a couple requests, I guess, right? To the superintendent, is that right?
I shared that Lincoln said as you're preparing the budget, here's some transparency. Here's another town's budget.
Right.
That provides us.
And then the superintendent replied and said, we can keep you that data, is that correct?
Prior, prior to that, I brought it to the Budget Subcommittee.
Yep.
We had discussion.
Yep.
And then there was another Budget Subcommittee.
Okay, that's important. I didn't mean to cut you off, but so it, you brought it to you twice, you said?
It was discussed at Budget Subcommittee twice.
Twice.
There was never any motion or affirmative support to do this.
To, to bring it to the committee?
It was, we should, no, the budget, so the request was made at Budget Subcommittee, it was discussed fully, and the Budget Subcommittee did not think this was a good idea. Twice.
Okay.
And, and followed that. So that was that. And then Dawn called me and said, I have a couple questions on the budget. And, and I said, I was in the middle of something, and the conversation was very pleasant. And I said, we discussed, I have to tell you something, we discussed this at Budget Subcommittee. And then Dawn followed up with a, I'm gonna request for free of information. So the next, I did, what I had to do was a Monday, the next morning, Dawn followed up with a request in an email to me and John. And I just said, yeah, I'll get it to you.
Yep.
Not just because that's what I do. When you guys ask me for something, I tend to do it. And then I had a conversation with Chris, and he said, you shouldn't be back unilaterally to one member.
Right.
Let's bring it back. So I did respond in an affirmative.
Yep.
And then had another subsequent good conversation with Dawn about it, and said, this is where I'm at.
Yep.
And we're gonna be discussing this at the next Budget Subcommittee and probably the school committee of today.
Right. Apologize for taking so long, but I'm just trying to get some clarity.
Yep.
Were you guys, when you were talking about this in your Budget Subcommittee, were you of the thought that she wanted to have the names associated? Or what, was there, what was the hesitancy not provided? What was it based on? If you don't, I'm not just asking that.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and I, again, a coward, Steve, you guys feel otherwise, but, but from my point of view, the way I looked at it after talking to Stamberg and the superintendent, it was more of a matter of manpower and availability to be able to change the presentation and do it in a timely manner, which is why I made the recommendation. And I don't know if I made it the first Budget Subcommittee meeting or the second one after I'd already reached out to Ms. Byers and she emailed us with the Hanover example. I figured it might be worthwhile for us to talk about as a school committee and then maybe start thinking that way and preparing maybe a similar budget to a Hanover for next fiscal year, and that way we have the time to do so. It was never a matter of, this is necessarily a bad idea. It was just more of the optics and understanding it too. Because to Hillary's point, when you have a teacher's name, again, it's, it's public record, it's available, but.
Only in Hanson.
But, but you can get it. But it, but again, it's a teacher's name attached to a salary. And I think the concern, and again, I don't want to speak on your behalf or anyone, but, but the optics of it all, and that's when I brought up the idea of contextualizing the data in the presentation so people can understand these type of things and not make some preconceived notions by looking at numbers alone, because it's not just numbers. I mean, the district budget is also the livelihood of thousands of students and has an impact, and, and the staff too. And that was really where I was coming from. It was more of the manpower, the optics, and, and understanding that and having it ready in a timely manner. It wasn't to be dismissive of Ms. Byers at once.
So the optics part of the conversation though pertained to the names associated with salaries, correct?
Culture and context, I think, is what we talked about. I think, use those specific words, again, we can pull the recording.
Yeah, yeah.
But I remember there was a conversation about, if folks want to understand, like, we talked, I referenced the Hanson Budget Report, right? It just issued a town meeting, there's no conversation. So again, how do we have context? How do we share the information? What are the cultural implications of now creating? We talked about culture in our school committee meetings, right? We talked about impact, and now we've got teachers talking about different salaries and things like that. What is it that we're trying to accomplish? Is there an other way to do it? And that's kind of where we left it.
Right, right, to Mr. Byers' point, it, it wasn't necessarily, again, from my point of view, the primary concern wasn't that the names affiliated with salary, but it was the climate and culture and the presentation, the optics of it, and how can we take the presentation and the data and present it to the community in a way that it's easy for them to understand and understand the short-term context pertaining to this fiscal year alone, but also the long-term context, where we're at as a district, and also what we're trying to put out there for messaging, so people can understand where we're at and what we're trying to accomplish. That's really where I was coming from in that.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you, you still going? Or you were kind of in the middle, and we gotta kind of get a motion or figure out what we want to do here.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a pretty important topic, and I know it's late, but, you know, if we're asking for, you know, whether or not we're being transparent and whether or not we're producing information in a reasonable, timely manner, and if there are other extenuating circumstances, there's a lot to discuss here, and I think it's important. So I, part of this whole thing, in my mind, is we're exactly where we should be when we have a situation like this.
Correct.
It comes back to the committee, and, you know, we come to a, we put it to a vote, and then we say, that's how the committee, you know, decided to do it, right? And I can speak firsthand that there's been times when I've wanted to, you know, see through some things that the committee might not wanted to at the time, and that's just how it goes, unfortunately, you know? That being said, I, it sounds as though we, we might have been able to do a little bit better job de-escalating this, you know? So, and that speaks to, I think, the spirit of cooperation within our committee. And I think that's something that, you know, even the way we interact in our meetings and we're cutting each other off and speaking over each other, I mean, that's something that we should really be thinking about and keeping in mind. Are we, are we a committee or are we, you know, 10 individuals, right? So there's a lot to digest and to consider here, but I, first and foremost, I, I think we need to think about how we interact as a committee.
Civility.
Absolutely.
Fred?
I'm just trying to take this a step further in my head. Once we get the information, what can we actually do with it? You know, it's not, we sort of have it when you have the schools, each individual school and what their salary line item is for teachers, parents, et cetera. You don't have it broken down by grade. Maybe if we had it broken down by grade, that would be, you know, a way of utilizing it. But let's say, you know, Indian Head is a higher salary for second grade compared to Duval. Okay, Duval has a lot younger teachers. What's the solution? You know, you still have the same amount of teachers, I'm more concerned about the teachers, the class size, et cetera. Now granted, they may not have the experience. At that point, do we, and I think this is where we have to rely on our administrators. Do we say to a senior teacher or someone with more experience, hey, you know, do you mind going over to Duval? You know, because it'll equal out what the experience level is? Or do you have the mindset, well, jeez, I want that young energetic teacher that has just come out of school and has all these great ideas, and, you know, we're the beginning of August, we do our tours, and there's that young energetic, and I don't want to take anything away from our teachers who've been here. She's gonna hit me. I don't want to take anything away from our teachers who've been with us for a while, but you see the enthusiasm on their faces, and we see the enthusiasm on everybody, don't get me wrong.
My kids are fantastic.
Oh, she's fantastic, I'll say that publicly. But, you know, what's the solution once we get the data? I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, yeah, jeez, I think we should have it, I don't care whose name is associated. And then I'm trying to think in my head, what would I do with it? Yeah.
So, yeah, David.
Yeah, so just one more quick thing, I'll be really.
Oh, sorry, did you have your hand up?
I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I can't keep track. So hold on, Michelle, and then David, and anyone after that.
That's right. I'm just basically.
Hold on, I'll be, I'll be.
I'm just wondering why it was so easy for Dawn to get it last year. She made a point that she got the information emailed to her right away last year.
I was on where she got last year.
Right, we're on the email. Didn't use Tom's email. She made a point in her letter that she requested it last year and she got it?
I don't know.
Yes. Yes, I can forward that email to everyone too. So I'm just wondering.
It did not get lost in the breach.
I'm just wondering, that was part of, like, why was it not even, it wasn't an issue last year, she got it last year? Were there names on it last year?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was names on it last year, very easily got last year. What changed in the course of the year when this request came up? Do we know?
So was that shared with the committee?
No.
No, it was sent to me.
It was sent, she requested it last year, she got it, got names, it never came up with the committee, we, because first we're hearing about it. This year she requested it.
Who provided?
We're all just hearing about it now, and then suddenly it was all of this. Just didn't know if there was anything to change.
Could I? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're gonna keep it in order, I don't want to go past.
No, I didn't mean to go out of order.
No, no worries.
I don't know, I guess if it was, right, I guess if it was provided last year, I'm not sure why the, was put to the Budget Subcommittee twice either, so.
I don't know, I just remember Dawn in her beginning opening statements.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just real quick, what I was thinking in my head while Fred was talking about high salaries, I think, again, when you're talking about context, well, why is there so many teachers with higher salaries? It's because we've been unable to hire younger teachers because we've been cutting the budget or we've been subsidizing with E and D or ESER. That's why there's such a disparity between tenure. It's not a matter that we're, teachers are being overpaid, but they've been here for X amount of years, and the teachers that aren't, you know, receive a pink slip. So I think that's context too, when you're looking at the grand scheme of things of why there's such a disparity in that regard, and I think that's where it comes in handy to contextualize the data. My point of view.
So.
Through, through you.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Have we laid off teachers? Have we pink slipped young teachers?
Hang on, Fred, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, I know, I know.
Come on.
But it's like, everyone's hard. So who was waiting? I lost track. I had Michelle, I got to David, and Chris.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good, I just, I had my question.
I just was gonna add that these guys on the Budget Subcommittee, I feel very confident that if they were aware of this last year, they would have handled the exact same way.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I, I don't know why it was given, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, these guys all have pretty strong integrity when it comes to what they do, and, and I feel strongly that they would have approached it the same way, so.
Fred, and then we gotta get, I get, we got some folks waiting. If they waited this long, then they.
Have we laid off and pink slipped teachers and not taken them back once we've had a budget? I know we had the one year where we had the COVID year, but have you?
I'm not talking during guest tenure, talking in general, say, this is 10, 15 years, also Rufe as well.
1920. We, we removed people.
2020?
The, the, no.
My senior year.
Oh, 2008, yeah, sorry.
Because I was there when. 2020.
How did he know that?
Yeah, if I can just have two seconds, Chris. I, I don't remember. I get asked a lot of things by a lot of members, sometimes. I, I get a lot of requests for different information. I do the best I can to accommodate all 10 folks on this committee. I don't remember doing that last year.
It wasn't you, John Stamberg, but you were on.
Okay, I, I don't remember. And again, and, and we had to set a precedent at one point that all requests go through the chair, and the chair then discusses.
Or the superintendent.
But, but, but it's right here, but we actually had to when the former chair was here, because I was getting phone calls for stuff from different folks. And I try to accommodate all. And Chris has reminded me that you are unilaterally my supervisor, not individually. You individually evaluate, but unilaterally we do this. Sometimes that's hard for me, because I also want to appease and give as much information as I possibly can. This year in particular, around the request, and we talked a lot about culture, my staff is fragile right now, and folks are talking about salaries. And I've had the request, and, and what we also have really become transparent is every document that goes out into this committee goes to my website. In the past, it was not necessarily the next day. We've really tried to make sure we expedite that. And I hesitate, and I'm not talking about the grade five teachers. I'm talking about the school psychologist that's a standalone, that now everybody knows their salary. I'm talking about the, the preschool, four teachers that are in preschool. So the, the, the protection I kind of want to give is, is there, not trying to be transparent, because I know it's public information, if somebody wants it, I get it to them, but necessarily not by grade. I, I can give it publicly as we do for the Hanson Town Report. I am curious why Whitman doesn't do that, because I would like to see if, if we're gonna be transparent in both communities, what those, to be equal to that. Because sometimes the school department is asked to do a lot of things that other people are not. So I'm a little protective of my people. But again, moving forward in doing that, we, we can do that. And I, again, I really wish, I remember last April, but I, I, like, I don't remember what I had for dinner last night. So again, everything, and, and Budget Subcommittee was new for us last year too. And, and I want, this year, everything I wanted to do about the presentation was to be funneling through the Budget Subcommittee. So if mistakes were made, or if I should have done something different last year, this is why I want everything to go through the, the Budget Subcommittee prior to presentation of, to the committee.
You folks have been waiting, so, and it's late, but if you could please kind of be concise.
I first want to acknowledge that I was the author of a lot of those questions to Jeff. I sent them to, that's in your pack. I sent them to him, I believe it was last week, the 8th, because it took me a while figuring out what my questions were, and it took him three days to get back to me. So I want to thank him for giving me the answers to the questions that I asked. As a member of the Whitman Finance Committee, I know that your budget, the $60 million budget, on our assessment, is being phoned over with a fine-tooth comb. And in my efforts to try to explain to people what's happening in fiscal '24, you have a lot of major line item shifts that you haven't had in before, because you have SER1, SER2, SER3, all sorts of grants. And my request to Jeff was, where are these wounds taking place? Most of my questions were answered, but there's still not enough for some people. I'm not interested in what anymore makes, because I know I can find it out if I go to the anti-Hanson website, full of any annual report. So it's not to be snooping, it's to be able to answer questions that people ask. This, this is not a new position, it was funded by SER3, which was designed to save elementary and secondary school children from the devastation of COVID and Whitman. Those funds have wiped down, but this is a position that needs to be saved. And so I will advocate for the school budget, and I need the information, information is powerful. I need the information to explain to people in a way that get the word transparent. It's, it's, it's there, it's a public document, and we're not trying to hide it. So I appreciate the, the efforts that Jeff has taken, and I'm sure with John's help, to respond to my questions. I try to keep them brief, and I don't know how much time it would take for John to take the current salary structure and generate the same information that he was able to generate last year. It takes a week, it takes a week, if it takes two weeks, it takes two weeks. But he's been able to grind out 26 documents in, I guess, three iterations since January 12th. So I would appreciate it if this could be focused on, let's get your budget supported by making sure that everybody's questions are answered. Thank you.
Chris, fortunately, I just want to give you some feedback on the offense, right? I think a lot of you guys know me, know I fought for the school budget for a number of years now, continue to do so, even though my kids aren't in the district anymore. This conversation, if people were watching, thank God it's late, says bad standards, right? Teacher salaries are published in every other town that is a non-regional school district. I get it can be sensitive, but they're out there. If I'm a committee member, and I'm a finance professional, if I was asked to vote for a budget, and the person who put that budget together couldn't get me, line by line, what made up in total, I wouldn't vote for it. I wouldn't vote for it. And if this budget comes to town meeting, and that information isn't provided to the committee members that I elect to represent me, then I don't want to vote for it either, and I don't want to fight for it. So I want you guys to think about that. Chris, you made kind of a scary point, right? You said, there are times that you've wanted to look into something, but the rest of the committee didn't.
Mm-hmm.
Well, guess what? That's how you find out when there's a problem, right? That's how you might have found out that we had an assessment issue over the years, right? If somebody had dug in, you know, I brought you over to my house, we talked about it, right? When we found it.
Can you connect the dots for me? I go back, I'm, I'm not following you.
I'm saying, if you cannot provide a very simple request, a line-by-line request of something that makes up a total number in a budget for a member of this committee,
of something that makes up a total number in a budget for a member of this committee, I don't even care for a reason why she wants to see it. If you as a committee say no, that's scary to me. Okay? Because something might have caught her eye, just like something caught my eye when it came to the assessment and I decided to dig in. If I couldn't have got the information that I was looking for, we never would have found it. We would have kept on going and the problem would have kept on getting bigger, right?
I don't think that's what was happening. I think you're painting a picture that was reality.
We have the line-by-line items. We don't have exactly.
The committee in the committee's got to move it forward, right? She's asking for something great down there.
Yeah, yeah. So, Chris, I think you're out of order.
Yeah, I think so.
But I think, look, again, I think what.
Are you not saying that you're suggesting that you're not saying the committee has the vote on her request whether to move it forward or not?
So, Chris, what I'm saying, and I would encourage you to go listen to the Budget Subcommittee meeting where we talked about this repeatedly and trying to make sure that we create transparency. And we talked about even creating a working group to share this. The concern was creating a public document that just had everything line by line. That was the concern.
But that's what she asked for.
It is.
Again, so at the time, what was coming through to us was not clear. So that's what we discussed.
Playing fast and loose, Chris.
It's the motion here that you moved it forward. I mean, how are we making a motion to get her what she wanted? All right? It's very scary to me, right? For the last ten years, whether it be members of the Finance Committee in old towns, we've been fighting, the school gives us one number to vote on. We've been fighting that forever.
Yeah, and I think, again, Chris, if you go on the website, there isn't one number. We've been very responsive with this and we've tried to find a balance. We tried to find a balance.
It's not much better.
We tried to find a balance between doing the right thing.
It's still different than.
Giving the information.
It's still different than a non-regional district. Hundred percent. I'm not saying we have to get to the level, but it's scary to think that somebody made a request that they had made for the last couple of years and they weren't able to get that request. This is an elected member of the committee who needs to understand the budget. It's simple backup. I mean, it has to be there. It's just backup for the line of the budget. Any one of you should be able to ask for that package for any line, for whatever reason. I mean, that's, and if it's not there because the system's gone on or because the spreadsheet doesn't work, well, then we need to look at that because that should be, I mean, Chris, you know, you do budgets.
I do, Chris, but I'm, yeah, and I appreciate your comments, but I think it's a comment. And again, I think everyone here is trying to do the best they can with what they have. And I don't think anyone's trying to hide anything. And I think we publish everything. Everything goes on the website. We're as transparent as we can. But when we have a comment and a conversation and we don't feel like it aligns and the conversation is, hey, let's have a conversation with the bigger committee and it's no, and if you don't give it to me, I'm going to give you a Freedom of Information Act. Again, that doesn't, that's not, that's not.
Just a shrug.
Right? So if every, so if every committee member says to the superintendent or the business manager, hey, I want this now, is, again, it's, and we have a report that the committee didn't get last year. So again, like, how is it helping? So it's whether the conversation, I'm going to disagree that I think the conversation sets us back. I think these are conversations we need to have to move forward.
It's really scary that there are numbers in that budget that are put together by somebody that a friend or, Chris, if anyone on this committee wanted to ask what makes up those numbers, you can't get the break.
I don't think that's actually. I think you're misrepresenting what happened.
Nobody said they can't.
We literally said let's create a working.
You just haven't got there yet.
You're coming way to the point.
This is the first I've heard of it. So.
We literally said let's create a working.
There's no delay on my end.
Thank you, Chris. We literally said let's create a working group. That's what we said. Go pull up the record.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve my request as submitted.
Second. Without names?
Could you clarify the request for the committee?
Without names.
Okay, so can you respond to that, I guess, before we go?
Well, so I have a motion. So the request, can you just clarify the motion so everyone's clear on what it says? What would you, what's the request?
Motion to provide the committee with the FY twenty-four detail, supporting the salary totals in the budget with position, salary, building location, and funding source.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, and before we move to discussion, can we, is everyone okay with allowing them?
Please.
Thank you.
Hi, Kevin and Sid, just a couple of comments. So my understanding is this information is readily available, right? Like, it's already produced somewhere, you know? So when you look at a budget, it'll say Indian Head and it'll say salary and it'll say five grade five, you know, whatever the breakdown is, right? Is that information already prepared?
It's by building, Kevin, and staff. It's not by grade level. In the lines, we can do that. We haven't done that. It's just by building the total salaries for Indian Head and professional teachers, special education, special education, parents, school psychologists are all separate lines.
Okay, so my understanding is that that information is readily available and has been available in the past. I think it was Dr. Whitman who had this extensive document, right? But there was never names. I don't think it was specific to, you know, positions or anything. So here's the other thing. If it goes in the name direction, right, and you start with it and gather that information, then it becomes analytical, it becomes evaluative, it becomes, all right, we have this data. We're going to crunch it by one variable, the salary piece, and then make decisions on that. I just think that, I'm not saying you can do that, but I think that sets it up to it. I think that's bad. Certainly, we talk about culture and environment and all these things. You know, hey, my name's out there probably somewhere. I don't think there's a budget out there right now that has a specific name, a position, years of service, any of that stuff, but I think we need to stay away from that.
So I just have a couple of points as well. We listen in the back often and I hear equity put out by committee members often. And if we're looking for equity, shouldn't the question, and I don't know this because this is not my town or whatever or how it works, shouldn't the true question go back to Whitman FinCom and ask them to start to report salaries out for the public? If that's what's happening in Hanson, if we want equity, that's one place to start. How is balancing salaries across the towns provide equity? How is that going to provide equity in the schools? And for any committee member to make an assumption that salary exemplifies equality of teaching is an insult to your staff and teachers.
For the record, that was never said.
It's implied.
So, okay, so we do have a request and that is different than the request you made because the original request did say that includes names, building location and staff names that tie out to the FY twenty-four. So that is, that is different.
And that could be a public records request.
Yeah, yeah, and you're free, yes, yes, absolutely. Any citizen is free to make any public request they want.
The motion I made did not include names.
Correct. I'm just.
Can I speak to that, though? So I personally, again, you know, I'm a teacher, but my husband is one of two gym teachers at Indian Head Elementary, right? So at Duval, there is one gym teacher. At Conley, there is one, there's one that floats in between. Like, you don't have to put their names. People are going to find out. And I, again, and I talked about this on Policy Sub, being a teacher right now is pretty miserable. Like, we talked about morale last week or two weeks ago, whenever we met again. The public is always looking for something negative. And doing this, I guess, I don't know if, I just have more questions because if we're looking, I don't know that looking at teacher salaries solves an equity piece. So perhaps that's where I'm struggling to get clarification because I am really concerned because there are a lot of, I mean, my kids are at Indian Head and my husband's there and many of the teachers who teach at Indian Head live in Hanson. And so do they want to go to Shaw's and have someone be like, you make that much money? You can probably afford that. Those are the things we hear, right? You only work six months a year. You get your summers off. You get big hit. Those are the things we hear. And when we're trying to get support for a budget, publishing something like this is not going to do that at all. Because the last time we had budget issues, that's what you heard. Look at how much the admin makes. Look how much Bob Rogers makes. Look at this, look at this. Like, I have the screenshots on my phone from the Facebook posts because I was a victim of those. That's fine, I can handle it, but there might be people who can't. There might be people who really are going to struggle with that. And I will also, I will just say that being a teacher right now is really, really hard. Morale across the state, across the country is not positive. And I think that we need to do things to not hurt our budget, to help our budget and to help our educators because we are scapegoated enough these days.
Chris? Yeah, so I just, the way I'm coming at this is it's, we were balancing it. We have a lot to consider, but we want to make sure we do the right thing. And that's what I think the process has been. It was carefully considered by the Budget Subcommittee and it was presented to the committee because we ultimately want to do the right thing. We don't want to hide anything. We don't want to, you know, that's, or deny anybody, you know, information. That's silly, that's irresponsible. Talk about setting us back. Those comments, I think, set us back. Further, you do, we do have to recognize the piece of, this is a budget that is going to be very challenging for these towns to pay for. And part of, you know, the support, garnering the support, is giving the people that make the decisions, well, that, I shouldn't say make the decisions, that, you know, need to, people that need to know this information need to have this information, right? And if that's, so there's a balance there. And I think that the balance, you know, could be to not have the names associated with the positions, you know? And I don't know. I don't, honestly, I don't feel like prepared to even vote on this. You know what I mean? I feel like I'd just assume, think about it some more, you know? Because it's a lot to consider.
David, if I'm Steve.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Dawn, from your motion, you're requesting a similar presentation to that of Hanover or that of last year? I just want to make sure I'm understanding properly before I speak.
I'm looking for FY twenty-four budget totals that were presented to us for all, not just teachers, but for all staff in the district, to be just the supporting documentation that adds up to that total, on that total line for all the salaries.
Presented in a similar way from the request that you made last year, right? To Mr. Sandberg through email? Is that, I guess, what I'm getting at?
Well, not presented the same way. It was just a A to Z list of everyone, not necessarily by building assignment. So looking for, you know, honest information.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful if it's all right with the committee. I can forward over the email that Ms. Byers had initially sent to me, addressed to the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee and the example she gave of Hanover. So then people could visualize that because I'm just hearing a lot from a couple of people and I don't know if everyone's really fully understanding exactly the request that Ms. Byers was making and the presentation that she used as an example. And I think it would be great to have that visual, maybe before we make a decision like that, just so people can understand. And I don't want anyone's intent to be misrepresented or the request to be misrepresented. And I feel like, again, I feel like some animosity is starting to boil up and I think it's really beneficial, maybe we can just take a step back, understand the request that Ms. Byers initially made, I'll forward over that email. And then maybe during a later school committee meeting, next school committee meeting, we can add on the agenda and follow up on this discussion. Because the way I look at it, it's ten thirty and everyone's a little agitated and I don't know if everyone's in a position to comfortably make a vote right now, but I think it is something that needs to be voted upon. So that's kind of where I'm at. You know, feel free to disagree, but it is getting late and I think this is an important vote to make, but I want people to understand correctly Ms. Byers' intent and I can forward over that email.
Steve?
I hate that, I dislike, I dislike the fact that we have to even vote on this. And let me say, because it's going to just divide us. We're going to feel divided. And I don't think, Dawn's given me some great questions, I hope you all, in the past. I wish I could sign up for the Dawn School of Business again. I'll tell you why I would enroll in a second. It's just, I love the way that she presents that. And I think what we were doing with the Budget Subcommittee was really trying to get down to those deltas of how things were changing because we know we're at the end of the line with the yeses. But I have to vote to support this because I'm a federal employee and my salary always comes even D, G S twelve, and I'll tell you right now, hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. Am I worth it? I don't know. Did it go up? I had a very fortunate career, but it's out there. It's just out there. And federaldatacenter.com or dot gov, I'm sure it's a dot com, it has me listed. Wake up Boston, National Archives and Records Administration tells you everything except for my height and weight. I don't know. I don't know how else to add to this. If I have to make a vote tonight, next meeting, whatever, I get a vote, it's, there you are.
I'll just echo Mr. Boyce's sentiments. You know, I don't see the harm in having that information for our committee. Granted, I feel more comfortable having it without names. I don't want names. Look at it, dissemble it. I don't know if there's anything much I can do with that data, but until I see it and go up and down it, et cetera, I really wouldn't know.
Just a quick clarification. So in my previous understanding of budgets, it's all, it would say, let's say, Indian Head, twenty-five full-time.
Subtle hint.
Full-time equivalents and there's a salary line. Twelve air professionals, there's a salary line. Two administrative assistants, salary line. What more do we want than that? Or what's proposed?
Currently, the line items are Indian Head salaries.
Just salaries, so no breakdown.
Principal, assistant principal are grouped together, teacher salaries. So again, going back to what we could create. So I think the document that I gave last year, John gave last year, was name and salary. So just like the town report would have Kevin Kafka, teacher, not specific, and that's what goes down. This is a different document that we're creating by building, by grade level. That's something that we don't necessarily have, we would put together.
And not specific to the request, but just concerned, you know, obviously a lot of things, a lot of variables, but concerned with, what does that information imply? How's that information going to be used, right? What's the purpose other than saying, hey, I'm trying to justify an item, but now it's evaluative in nature based on the specific clientele personnel that you have in the building? I'm just, that doesn't sit.
Yeah.
I'm going to add that any citizen, my nineteen-year-old daughter can submit a public records request for this information and does not need to explain or give a reason why. That's simply it. I understand I'm an elected official in this position, but again, I'm not saying what I'm going to use it for. It's for informational purposes.
That's the concern, I think.
But anyone, nobody needs to give a reason why they're requesting public information. The information's public, the district has it, they have it. It's not even a time constraint to provide it and I'm saying that simply because the total is there on every report. So the total came from somewhere. So I just would prefer to move to the vote and so we can settle this matter that doesn't even need to come through the committee.
I just have a clarifying question, Chair, through you, to Dawn. So I think for me, that's my question. I think the comment that you just made, like, anybody can file the public records request and get this information if they want it, sounds malintentioned and I do not believe that your intentions are bad here, but I'm trying to understand, because again, salaries by teacher vary so much because of their level of degrees, their level of services. They're, I don't even know if it counts like coaching salaries or stipends for clubs and things like that, or if that, like, if that's in or if that's a separate piece too. I think to help me get on the wagon of, okay, we need this, I need more information about why you need this. And you said to figure out why that light item is there, but again, logically speaking, and I am not a finance person, but I do look at my lanes and my steps every year to see where I'm going to go.
Looking for it to add up to the totals. That's what I want to see.
So, you know, and I, so I guess.
So then you need that specific information. So I'm going to be honest with you. It is, even by school and school and position, it's opening it up. So could we do one, like Kevin just said, where you say Indian Head, twenty-five full-time teachers, here's their salary. Three paras, here's their salary. Would that suffice and do what you need it to do? Or do you need to know the exact position? Because again, I just, and I know it's a public records request, but you just said the one you got last year was A to Z. So it didn't tell you what school they were at and you would have to go and do that research, or did it? And the rest of us didn't get that document either, so that's another, like, problematic piece.
But I think, so again, going back to what we talked about in Budget Subcommittee, one of the things I suggested was we could have a working group. And in my mind, I was thinking like, Dawn should be on the working group. So my issue isn't us as elected officials doing our job to validate and hold the school district accountable. My concern is the cultural impact of, because, and this is what I'm thinking, so maybe I'm missing it. As soon as we publish this report, it's document number?
Twenty-nine.
Whatever we're up to.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So it's not, this isn't just for the committee to use. This is going to be public because that's kind of the precedent we started. So again, like, in my workplace, right, we have salary conversations. You know, we think about how we do that. We're trying to be thoughtful because of the implications. Now, can we go to the other extreme of, we're just going to share everything because we're a public school district and that's how it's going to be? That's totally up to the will of the committee. That is totally up to the will of the committee. My point is I think there's an other way to make sure that we tick and tie, it sounds like she did it last year, right? Tick and tie those accounts to the totals without necessarily making this right out in the face of, it's going to go on the district website and it's going to be sitting there as document number twenty-eight on whatever day it's going to be, right? That's what I'm trying to see if we can reconcile. Again, maybe that doesn't matter, but that's my point. My point is not, I think we're all elected officials, we're all trusted to do a certain job. I think there's a way for us to do that without necessarily doing that fully publicly. If we have to, we have to, sure, but I think we're hired to do a job.
One idea, I'm sitting here, and this would be through you to Ms. Byers and, you know, she's the one that's requested the report. I don't know if this would suffice, but what if we were able to get a report just by building a grade level when it comes to, you know, and the different positions, granted, as Hillary said, there might be one phys ed teacher in a building, so, I mean, you'd be able to feed it right up.
Yes, it seems to be them.
But at the same time, Hanson gets the information. I don't know if you send it to Whitman or if they just don't request it. They've never said anything. You know, but where it is public, but if we had it grouped a little bit where it's more, or closer held, if that would be something that would be satisfactory and if that maybe makes sense to more people, because then you're saying, hey, yeah, we've got four teachers, here's the total salary, and then everything adds up. Instead of saying teacher one, teacher two, teacher three, teacher four. I don't know if that could be a compromise and a solution, you know, to make everyone feel better about it.
Just one more thing. If you're looking for things to add up, shouldn't it add up by building anyway? So what does it matter while that's?
But if you don't know what was comprised and they have to add it up to.
Salaries, teachers' salaries.
25 teachers, 10 air professionals, two admins. Oh, that's it? I understand what you need.
And that was my question. And I don't know if, like, I had asked that question. Would that suffice to get, to get Don the information that she needs if it was broken out like that?
So I think we have a motion. And I think we've kind of had the discussion.
The black lights might go off.
I know. They really might. Talk about healthy sleep ties for all of us. So I think at this point, we should probably vote on the motion at hand and go from there. So.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
We're going to vote right now on whether or not to produce this document in the way that Don's asked for.
Yes.
Does that mean that we can't do it at a later date? Or reconsider at some point and, and work together, like, we're, I think the whole, what's the whole issue at hand here is, we're trying to be considerate. We're trying to be thorough. We're trying to be transparent. And that's why we're here after 10 o'clock, because we all recognize our responsibilities. But it isn't always clear cut and, you know, let's just do it and be done with it.
I agree. I agree. I also agree with David earlier saying, are we ready to vote? I think we all have, we're all, we all have concerns and we're just not sure of it all.
I guess my question to the committee, because, so I want to understand before we go to this vote, because we have to vote it one way or another, I think, because it's a motion in a second. So there's a motion in a second.
Unless the motion's withdrawn.
Right. Is, are we, what do we anticipate? Where are we anticipating this information will be placed after the report? Is, this will be a public document? Is that what we're thinking? Okay.
Everything I give to you guys.
Okay, so it would just be, it would be something shared with the committee and, okay.
We'll upload a timeout.
It's going to be published publicly or it's going to be just for the committee?
Everything that we, I think.
That's what I want to understand. I'd like to, I'd like to understand that.
So everything that I've, that John gives you, the request to the committee is to upload actually the next day to the website.
And it will be attached to the budget?
It'll be attached to the budget.
Okay.
It'll be just a supporting document.
That just helps me decide.
Can you reread the motion?
Uh, Jen may have it if she's still over there, but I have it on a piece of paper somewhere. It was... Uh, the committee shall, the committee should receive a report of FY24 detail with salary totals, position, salary, and building. Don, does that sound right?
Funding source.
And funding source, sorry.
Without names.
Without names. Well, yeah. It's implied because names is on it. But yes.
And for clarification, if you don't mind me, Chair?
Yeah.
And, Don, this was inspired in a similar fashion to the Hanover document, correct?
The Hanover document.
Okay.
I know, but we haven't seen.
I don't know the Hanover document.
That's my, that's kind of my, that's kind of a holdup for me too.
That's no help.
Like, it's not helpful because I don't know what the Hanover document says. Does it give those specific pieces? Because that's important, right? And I haven't seen it.
If you don't mind.
I'll copy and email it to everyone.
So like, so I'm going to vote on this now and I haven't seen it. So I'm missing, I'm uninformed. I'm going to, I'm being asked to make.
David, David, David.
Sorry, sorry. Let me just backtrack to my original point. So if, if the, the committee isn't entirely comfortable with voting tonight because they want to see the email and it's not voting one way or another for just a clarification so they can visualize what exactly Ms. Byers was saying, because I have that context because she sent it to me and I sent it to the Budget Subcommittee. So they have that context as well, but the entire committee does not have it because it wasn't forwarded over to you guys. So what I can do, and I'm sure Ms. Byers will send over the document as well, but I'll forward over to you the original email if, if.
How about just the link? How about just the link?
But it doesn't matter unless, it doesn't matter unless Don withdraws the motion, correct? Unless she withdraws. She's not going to withdraw.
So we have a motion and a second, and we need to vote.
Right, that's it. This talk, the conversation's over.
You can vote however you want.
Either she withdraws or we vote.
I'm going to make a vote tonight with you, Paul, and I'm going to later probably make another motion to take another vote. Because I don't feel comfortable and prepared to vote.
Right, same.
Not above, still.
You just need to vote. You need to vote accordingly.
So that's.
But politics will get involved.
So any other discussion? All right, with that being said, all those in favor? All those against? All those opposed? So that was 4-4, I think, right? Is there only?
4-5.
4-5?
Yeah, Beth's not here.
4, so which, sorry, it's late.
So 4 in favor, 5 against.
4 in favor, 5 against. Okay, so the motion does not pass.
So just one more thing. So would you guys want me to send over that email and then we're going to take this up at a later?
We're willing to take it up again.
So David, I don't think you can send an email to the committee without violating open meeting law. You can share, or you can share it to Jeff. Jeff can put it in our packets.
Well, then could you share it us?
Jeff can. I can, no, no, no. Jeff can provide information. I think if you start emailing the entire committee, we're going to run into one another.
She just emailed all of us.
But she's just sent us a link that's, that we can all access on the public. We just talked about it anyway. So I think we're okay there. Yes.
I, I hope that after tonight, we find, get this email. Do you guys meet again before we meet?
February 28th.
Budget Subcommittee?
Yeah.
So perhaps you got.
March, no.
Mark?
If we, if we meet on March 1st as a committee, I don't think the Budget Subcommittee will have met yet.
I'm not comfortable discussing this meeting item again at Budget Subcommittee. So I, I would not, I would not be comfortable doing that at this point. I think this should be a full committee discussion.
Sure, that's fine. I, I, my point was, I hope.
These guys can do what they want to do.
I hope we can work, continue to work to be as transparent as we can while being as sensitive, sensitive as we can.
Understood.
I agree with Chris 100%. I mean, I feel like we need to be sensitive to what we heard tonight from our teachers, but yet be open and willing to support our other members. I mean, we, like he said, we need to remember, we're not 10 individuals. We need to support everyone. It just, we weren't given the Hanover example. Like, we just were sort of caught up around this tonight.
Understood.
Is there, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is a FOIA request that still needs to be, you know, by the administration.
The, any, what do you mean?
The FOIA request.
What FOIA request?
It's a FOIA request, from what I understand. And that, that needs to be.
No. So I think she can put in a, I don't know. I don't know if she, that's, that's between, I, I don't think we need to discuss that. That's between Don and the, that's a, that's a, that's not a school committee matter.
That's legally not a public records request if it came from my school committee email, is what I heard.
No, I think there's a district process for how we do FOIA requests. I think there's a form, there's a process.
No, it's an email to George Farrell.
Whatever it is.
It has to, so, so let me just clarify, George isn't here as the records. You emailed myself and included George on that. We have to clean up what you want in that FOIA request. Because the way it was written, it wasn't necessarily a FOIA, it was a request. So we can clean it up, absolutely. So I can speak to you. I can give you the guidelines of it.
I, I read the guidelines online. I believe I followed the guidelines. I sent it to George Farrell.
You sent it to me and CC George.
I'll resend it. I'll start this again.
You absolutely can.
Okay.
Please.
The only item we didn't get to is legislative update and Subcommittee reports. Is everyone okay with, we'll pick up on those next time.
Chair, if you guys would, this is very brief because it's very relevant to what we're going to be doing next meeting, school choice participation. I just wanted to give a Budget Subcommittee update pertaining to that because that is something we're going to be working on. Is that's okay?
Isn't our meeting, next school committee meeting, the first?
Yes.
And when is Budget Subcommittee?
The, the third.
When do we plan on voting for school choice?
It has to be done before May.
Only attack.
So we can, you can give the update, I think, at the March 1st meeting? Because, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Because we won't have, we're not meeting, Budget Subcommittee's not meeting.
I, I wasn't sure if we were going to vote on school choice on March 1st. Okay, because we were talking about that.
It has to be a public hearing.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor.
Thank you.